Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop of March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The council thanks you for being part of your city government. At workshops, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dash-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised on PSC TV Channel one ninety-one on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With housekeeping taken care of, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Brown is not here yet. Campos?
Present.
Milney?
Here.
Roach?
President.
Serrano?
Here.
Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barajas has excused. There are five council members present. Mayor Protem?
Oh, great. We have a quorum. All right. Would you please join me and rise and join me in for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all very much for that. With that, we'll move on to item four, verbal reports from council members. Do any of my fellow council members have an I have a meeting or anything they'd like to report on? Councilmember Roach?
We had the groundbreaking for Broadmoor area on Wednesday of last week. It was actually quite a busy week last week, so that went great. We had a great community turnout. Kathy and Dale Adams were there. I was remembering their first names, but not their last. And I believe Councilmembers Serrano, Milney, and Maloney were there as well. Oh, wasn't? Okay. Port Commissioners, a couple of Port Commissioners, Vicky Gordon and Jean Reichman, as well as County Commissioner Brad Peck, were all in attendance, so good turnout. And then we also had the meet and greet for, a community meet and greet for interim city manager, Adam Lincoln. And I believe there was a third event too, but I'm spacing it now. Was a lot of stuff happening last week, so that the turnout of the community at the meet and greet for for Adam went great. Lots of good comment cards came back in the positive of the work and the relationships that he has built. So grateful for the work that you've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
Mine will be really short. We had been Franklin Transit's Board of Directors meeting on Thursday. We went over our financials. Things are looking pretty good. We are eager to hear from the public. We too run meetings similar to this and are looking for public comment on any feedback you may have that's out there. That's pretty much it.
Great. Thank you for that. I'll just add on briefly to what Councilmember Roach said in terms of the Broadmoor groundbreaking. One thing I think people get a lot of really confused on, especially on Facebook, is that the city doesn't actually build buildings. We're not building developments. We don't, you know, build Costco or not build Costco, things like that. We build this infrastructure, and so that was really the key groundbreaking was really about infrastructure. And when we're talking about why it's so important, when we talk about Dale and Kathy Adams and why their presence was so notable, is because they're the majority property owner for the for the commercial area that we've designated out there. They've been very active in trying to recruit developers and what that space is going to look like. So we as a city get to help make sure that you've got the roads, sewers, water, et cetera. Really, the next step of who comes, what do those buildings look like, and how is that going to feel? That really is a big, that's going to be, you know, very much the property owner and then the developers out there that largely get to decide that. So just to amplify a little bit of what Councilmember Roach was saying. Any other comments from council? All right, we'll zip right on to item five, items for discussion. So item A, Resolution twenty-two thousand and twenty-three through twenty-two thousand and twenty-eight Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan Final Presentation, Director Racki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council. Good evening, Zach Racki, ACS Director. And yeah, the item brought before you this evening began in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one when we had entered into a consultant agreement with MIG Consulting to completely overhaul and establish a new baseline, Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. This has gone through significant work with the community outreach, surveys, a couple of reports to this body at City Council, a couple of reviews in front of the Parks Advisory Board as well, and a significant two-month comment, public comment period that just commenced, or excuse me, that just concluded on February twenty-third. So with that, the ACS team and our consultant team felt we'd bring it here for discussion and final approval, question and answer. We do have MIG. We have John Venus and Cindy Mendoza from MIG who will be presenting, and I will turn it over to John. John, are you there?
I am. Good evening. Good evening, council members. It's an honor to be here. My name is John Venus. I am a principal with MIG. We're a consulting firm. We do planning and landscape architecture. And with me tonight is my colleague Cindy Mendoza, another principal and director of our Parks and Recreation Services. So I'm going to share my screen. I've got a presentation. Let's see, Zach, are you sharing?
John, I have your presentation up, so we can just work off of this one. Just tell me we can do it. Advance the slides.
All right. So presentation tonight, I know you've got a full agenda. Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to review the plan. Obviously, that's why we're here, is to discuss any questions you have. So I'll try to keep things moving, and if you want to stop or pause, have any questions, feel free to interrupt me. So the presentation tonight, really want to get an overview of the plan and the process. What did we do? How was the community involved? So we'll talk about all the different community outreach activities, what we heard, and then talk about the vision. What is the long-term vision? This is a long-term, twenty-year plan for the City of Pasco, so it's important to keep in mind we're considering things that could be taking place years from now, but also what might happen sooner than that. We'll talk about recommendations, the priorities we heard from the community, and then finally, an action plan and implementation steps from the plan. So the presentation tonight really follows along the design and outline of the plan itself. So there are four chapters based on a lot of the information you're going to hear tonight. And then we've got several supporting appendices that provide a lot more technical information. So the idea here is that you can read the plan, you can go to the chapter you want to search for, but there's a lot more information to dive into in those appendices if you need to. So what is this plan all about? Why are we talking about this? Why is this so important? There are a variety of different reasons, but number one, we're trying to get an understanding of what's happening in Pasco. Pasco is fast-growing. I know you all know that very well. So getting a handle on all the different sites, programs, recreation facilities, open spaces, that's really critical for this project. So getting the city an updated inventory and also looking at conditions. We spent quite a bit of time with city staff, looking over all the different parks and understanding on-the-ground conditions today. We heard from the community. I'll talk about that in a second. So we documented community needs, what the priorities are from the community. This is a community-built, community-supported plan and vision. And then finally, recommendations for that planning horizon. One big part of this is the plan as a guide for the city. Where are we heading? Where do we want to be in the future? But also a very important tool for funding. The state of Washington has some excellent funding programs, and this project, this plan, helps make the city eligible for those grant funding programs. So let's go back to the first time we presented for an account. So I realize some council members are different than they were in June of two thousand and twenty-one. But this was the first meeting we had with council, and at that time, we asked, what were your priorities? What would you like to see with this with this plan? So I have those listed here, and I think it's important to keep this in mind, especially as you see what we heard from the community, how much those community aspirations match with what the council priorities are, and also some of the recommendations in the plan. So things like reinvesting in existing sites, meeting growth needs, the community-centered aquatic facility, you know, that has come to fruition by voters since we started this project, but really making parks, recreation, and open spaces places that really shine and are welcoming in Pasco. So the planning process, we have a four-phase approach to this project. We started back, as I mentioned, in summer of two thousand and twenty-one. And at that point, it was really about understanding on-the-ground conditions, the inventory, hearing from staff what their opportunities, ideas, and concerns are. Then we really started our public-facing side of this project, so community survey, meetings with community members and stakeholders, and then that rolling into action planning. So identifying the vision, the recommendations, and then the priorities for the plan, which is where we are now. It's important to note that throughout each step, we involved the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We've met with council two different occasions, and we also had a specific committee for this project, the Master Plan Advisory Committee, made up of various stakeholders throughout the City of Pasco and the region, the Tri-Cities area. So the inventory, I mentioned how critical that is. Pasco has a large and growing Parks and Recreation system. So forty-seven sites, six hundred and four acres, lots of trails, twenty-one trail miles, off-street trails. And then it's important with this project and plan to think about those partners, schools, huge part of Parks and Recreation in Pasco. Twenty-four schools, making up that system, thinking about all those different recreation amenities that go with that. And then just incredible, incredible regional resources. So you don't have to go far outside of the city to find some incredible, incredible open spaces and parks. So over twenty-one hundred acres of nearby resources as part of this system. We looked at access. An important piece of this plan and this process was understanding how is it, how can people in Pasco get to parks? How challenging is it? Do you lack parks altogether? And so this map shows one of the earlier assessments we did, taking park location data and finding out just how well-served the community currently is. So you can kind of see those colored areas showing you close distances. We consider that about a ten-minute walk, so about a quarter to a half mile from a park, and then conversely, you can kind of see those areas that don't have great access. We also looked at equity. Equity is a common theme throughout this planning process. We heard a lot about equitable concerns and ideas from the community. But early on, we also looked at where are parks located and what exactly is going on behind the scenes in neighborhoods in Pasco. So we looked at a variety of different socio-demographic indicators based on census data. So this map on the right shows census blocks throughout the entire city, the darker shades really showing areas that are more diverse. And those different indicators are shown on the left. So density, percent of low-income residents, higher youth population, communities of color, and then, of course, areas that lack that close proximity to parks and recreation facilities. So a little bit more about how was the community involved and what did we hear? We know council let us know how important that was when we first started, and that's exactly what we set out to do. So this is a laundry list of everything we've done to date, listening, hearing from the community, providing as much information as we can. Almost, what was it, sixteen, sixteen-hundred-and-eighty-nine respondents to the two community questionnaires. A really incredible response and something to be proud of from the community. But we also know how important in-person activities were. This was, of course, during the pandemic. So we offered opportunities online and in person. So this image at right, colleague of mine and myself, we were out at some soccer games last spring, hearing from folks, providing materials in Spanish. So that was a great opportunity, as well as having those two online questionnaires in Spanish as well. So through all those activities, we heard from a wide variety of community members. That was the goal. We know Pasco has a high population of Hispanic, Latino, Latino residents. So we heard a lot from those folks, youth, adults, older residents, visitors, stakeholders. It was truly a comprehensive engagement process, which really built the foundation for the vision. This is just a snapshot from the first online questionnaire, had over seven hundred respondents to that questionnaire. And we asked, if the city had more money to invest in Parks and Recreation, what should the top three priorities be? And I think this is interesting because the very first one, as I mentioned, was approved by voters while we were going through the planning process, the aquatics facility. But also looking at the next two, really investing in existing assets. So reinvesting in current parks, replacing, repairing, aging facilities, and then adding more variety, more things to do in parks. Maintenance also important, as is building or adding new parks to the system. So all of that came together, all of what we heard, to form this future vision. And it's important to have this whole vision statement, and hopefully you've had a chance to review this, but I just wanted to highlight some key pieces of the vision. Equity, access, as I showed you earlier, community health and livability. There's a major connection between Parks and Recreation and personal community health, but also safer streets, interconnected parks and neighborhoods. I'll show you a little bit about the trail system in just a second. The Columbia River being a major of Pasco, its identity, its culture, so linking and embracing the connection to the river and linkages throughout the region. And then responding to community needs. Obviously, we did this process over the last couple of years, but it'll be important as we go further to really continue to listen to what the community ideas are over time. And then lastly, involving the community. This was obviously a community-involved process, but that doesn't stop with plan adoption. That's an ongoing part of this process. So a little bit about the future system. I just described what that long-term vision is. How do we get there? How do we go from conditions today to the next several years and twenty years and beyond? This map is the Future Park System. It shows park expansion, especially in future growth areas, areas that lack convenient distance to parkland. And that includes what we heard from the community, as well as the analysis we did showing park deficit. Where are some areas that don't have great access, especially places that are underserved, communities of color, populations of low income, and so on. A lot of this map also shows reinvestment in existing parks. We heard how important that was to the community. So all those little black symbols you see on this map show projects identified to improve, to repair, and to increase what's happening in existing parks. In total, almost every park has a project planned, and we categorize those in one of two ways, either renovation, so repairing or replacement, replacing facilities within a park, or a capacity enhancement project. And this is adding something into a park that doesn't exist today. And these are important differentiators because this is what a lot of funding sources need to have, including impact fees, but also a lot of grant funding programs. The Future Park System has thirteen new parks. Again, these are, some of these will take place over the next six years, some will take place longer term as opportunities arise. And I mentioned where these come from, how the locations were identified. Future trails. We heard a lot about connectivity being important. And this didn't just start with this process. The city has been working on trails and connectivity improvements for a long time. So we use a lot of the existing data, current plans, talk with staff about what's planned, but heard a lot from the community, you know, how come we can't have this connection through my neighborhood? Or how come we can't have a better connection, you know, to this major street, to the river? So we have a number of projects identified in this map. These are off-street trails that supplement the existing transportation system that are part of this plan. And you can see a lot of it is about connecting, new growth areas, existing neighborhoods, downtown, the river, you name it. That's what's included in this in this map. Also, it's important to show what the future connections are in the Broadmoor Planning Area. So we had a lot of discussions with the planning team for that project, really thinking about how do these two planning processes work together? So trails, as I mentioned, six new off-street trail projects. These are segments that improve connectivity in Pasco. I talked about consistency with the transportation system plan adopted by the city, how these projects coincide with one another, and then, of course, the Broadmoor Master Plan and consistency with that specific area of Pasco. So really quickly, I wanted to highlight some of the broader system-wide recommendations. This is a plan for the city, the entire city, future growth, existing needs. So we talk about in this plan, five different categories of system-wide recommendations. And I'm just going to talk through just a few of the highlights of those. So for the first category, Parks and Facilities, the plan recommends adopting function-based dedication and design standards. And I think Zach will mention a little bit more about why that matters and what will be happening next. But essentially, the plan provides specific standards when new parks come online to really follow, to match what the community envisions for future parks. Striving to provide parks within about a ten-minute walk to neighborhoods. So that's a really important one that we heard about, having close proximity to parkland, especially in those park-deficient areas. Updating requirements for land dedication and park impact fees. So we have a recommendation on helping the city to get started with that process, to make sure impact fees both align with the level of service envisioned in the plan and any dedication requirements down the road. Open space shorelines and trails. As I mentioned, a big part of this plan, policies and recommendations to really embrace the riverfrontage as a natural, cultural, recreational asset. And then pursuing new trails, parks, open space as envisioned for the Broadmoor Planning Area. So four new parks in total, new connections within and through that that planning area to really make that growth commensurate with the vision for that future growth area. And then improving community walkability and bikeability. I mentioned all those new trail systems, new trail connectivity projects, as well as policies to help ensure safety for users and design guidance for how those trails can be built. Recreation programs and services. We talked a lot about kind of capital projects, which, of course, those are the things people like to see. But Pasco has an incredible recreation program and all sorts of different activities, events. These are the things that we hear a lot about when we heard from the community, things that draw them to downtown, reasons to go out and have fun with their family and friends. So essentially, a lot of this is talking about, keep it up. The city's doing a great job. And so this is an opportunity to really leverage, you know, the thousands of people that come out to some of these events, the hundreds of people that sign up for recreation classes and programs to continue that full range of activities. The plan also recommends testing new opportunities, recruiting new providers. We don't know what the new trends will be a year from now, even six months from now, so the plan provides guidance on how to do that. And then continuing to track participation to inform decision-making. The city has some great statistics on who's signing up for these things, you know, how many people are coming to some of these big events. And these are really critical to keep track of those, to make those decisions down the road. Just a few more on recommendations. This one on maintenance and stewardship. I think the one thing we heard loud and clear is, we can't build or add anything unless we can take care of it. That's really important. So the recommendation in the plan is to increase maintenance level of service. This graph shown at right in the plan shows comparisons to comparable cities across the country based on national data. So Pasco comes in kind of in the lower quartile of comparable communities. And what we heard from staff was really a need to increase that maintenance level of service, both to keep up with existing needs, but also to continue that level of service for future facilities, new parks as they come on. So increasing full-time equivalent employees and cost per acre. And then lastly, collaborative management and partnerships. The city doesn't do it all alone. It needs to rely on a variety of different partners, from the school district to the port, to the county, to other private entities and nonprofits and stakeholders. So that's an important one to consider. We talked with staff about eventually transitioning to having a city Parks and Recreation Department. And this is critical for a mature park system, such as the system that Pasco has, to really dedicate and devote specialized staff that can handle the planning, the operations, and the management of a large and growing Parks and Recreation System. So continuing formal partnerships and then increasing communications with the public. You know, we heard a lot of people that were very proud of Pasco's park and recreation opportunities, but there are a lot of new residents, a lot of folks that don't know what's available, and that's something that really should be kept at the forefront. Just a few slides on priorities. We have this laundry list of projects for the next, you know, ten to twenty years. But we asked in our second survey and conversations with folks, what would you like to see happen first? What's important for the short term? So this map shows results of our second questionnaire, and we looked at different areas, different neighborhoods of Pasco to see what are the different priorities based on those different locations, based on where respondents say they live. So you can see they're a little bit different. Some folks say, let's repair, replace facilities. Others say, let's add more, you know, trails, greater variety. So this helped us really custom tailor with the city staff on what do we want to prioritize, what should happen first? And here's the result. This is the six-year action plan, or what we consider a short-term priority list. And it shows all the different projects based on those priorities to really take on in the short term, the six-year action plan. This is also a requirement from grant funding opportunities from the state of Washington. They like to see a six-year capital improvement plan within the plan document. So that's exactly what this provides. So in total, thirteen projects to improve existing parks. One future new community park in North or West Pasco. Two neighborhood parks, one in an underserved area, and then another in a new growth area, the Broadmoor area. And then two trail projects identified based on that future system. So all those projects coming together in the next six years is a total of approximately sixteen million. And then we show all the different potential funding sources, both current and existing, to make that a reality. So I think I have two last slides here. One, I just wanted to highlight, we did receive comments on the public draft plan that was put on the city's website. One of the first things we heard from a few people is, you know, hey, this came out in December. That's the holidays. It was kind of crazy. Can we extend this longer? Just didn't give us enough time. So that's exactly what we did. We extended it through the month of February. So from roughly December through end of February, we had that comment period open to review the draft plan, the complete draft plan. Included in the packet tonight is a list of the responses, a list of the comments we received and responses to those comments. If you're curious on seeing more detail on those, in general, there was a kind of a mixture of just support for specific projects, recommendations, or policies. Some comments kind of clarifying, what did you mean by this, or could we add this phrasing in perhaps? So a couple of refinements along those lines. And then there were a few comments specifically on policies and projects for the Broadmoor Planning Area in Northwest Pasco. So some concerns around making sure we have adequate parkland to serve that growth area, making sure we have those trail connections, and making sure we have the right types of parks, especially on the riverfront. So implementation, what can the city do to start making these things happen first? So we have in the final chapter of the plan, some specific steps to start with first. One is, I mentioned, those partnerships being so critical. So continuing to convene, it sounds like I heard council member mention recent meeting with the county. So those are critical to keep this moving forward. Building community support, I think Pasco has seen just how successful the recent bond measure was with the aquatics facility. Community support in general from everything. Community support in general from everything in terms of just how much, how much work the city's taking on to let folks know just how excellent of a park system that exists and just how hard it works, city staff or maintenance operations, you name it. Integrating infrastructure, it was really fun to see the farmer's market getting constructed and then finalized. So we actually had an event in the finished facility towards the end of the process. But really integrating things happening in downtown with transportation projects, with stormwater projects, making those all part of the park system. I mentioned recreation programming, really positioning that. That's a big part of what people feel is important for quality of life. So making sure that stays at the forefront. And then last but not least is monitoring plan progress. I mentioned, this is, we don't have a crystal ball. We, we have assumptions and ideas based on a lot of research and community involvement, but things change over time. So it'll be important for the city to continue to look at this plan and update it as time goes by to make sure what's happening with new projects, with new ideas, match what's going on in the community. So with that, I just wanted to thank you again. It's been a pleasure working with city staff, with you all on this important project. We're very proud of this project. But again, as I mentioned, Cindy and myself were here tonight to respond to any questions or comments you have. But before we do that, I wanted to hand it back over to Zach.
Yeah, thank you, John. Thank you for the presentation on the very detailed progress that we've had since the summer of 2021. Just for council and the community's benefit as well. We are looking from a staff standpoint at sort of our first three priorities. Once you establish a master plan, it really provides that foundation by which you can start establishing ordinances and, and codes to help implement that vision as we talk about implementing the master plan, not letting it gather dust on the shelf. And I think some of the, some of the three points that we'll be looking at as staff to present to council throughout the remainder of the year is certainly a general parks land dedication ordinance. Right now, we rely on the SEPA when new development comes in. But this would be a, you know, acreage of parks land dedicated per certain number of residents that are proposed with a new subdivision. This is going to be particular. I know that the Broadmore development is a big on our list and certainly a big item for the future there. So as we look at, I think it was system-wide recommendations E. There's another set of collaboration that staff's going to do, and that's collaboration with community and economic development department. So if we looked at the provision of parklands for the Broadmore development based on the level of service outlined in this master plan, we'd be looking at 44 acres of neighborhood parks in the Broadmore area, in addition to 46 acres of community parks. As we know, in our capital improvement plan, the northwest community park is slated, and we're searching for land in the northwest area, north of Burns Road, so north of the Broadmore development. But that certainly has been a key tenet of our capital improvement planning. In addition to park land dedication, we'd be looking at establishing a minimum design standard for our parks in provision with some of the guidance of this master plan as well. So that would be the second item. And then we can't forget about maintenance as well. So we would be looking at further collaboration with the community and economic development department on how our maintenance, particularly on our shoreline parks, can conform to shoreline management plan and any other just environmental provisions of the day to make sure that we're, we're improving our maintenance in concert with environmental regulations and some of the plans that we have from community development as well. So those are the three there. We'll turn it over to council for questions. As John stated, he and Cindy and myself are here to field any questions at this workshop. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation and the details into this. I know it's something the community has been very interested in. We've got a lot of engagement on it in the past, and I know this council has been expressed at all as well. I'll open it up for council members. Councilmember Serrano.
Thank you. Zach, so you just mentioned standards. Can you kind of talk through that a little bit more of what we would look to be binding ourselves to for current and future park design standards? Or is that just kind of right now in the ether and might be beneficial?
Sure. It's, it's in the ether and might be beneficial. I mean, we look at just minimum features you would see in a park. The neighborhood park would have a playground for children, but it would be all ages instead of just focused on, you know, toddler to age five. Outdoor basketball court. So what we look at is, really, it is in the ether at this point. We'd work through our Parks Advisory Board and bring a certain level, look, see what's been successful in other communities as well, as well as the guidance of the plan to bring sort of, we could envision like a menu set of items for, you know, hey, choose these things to have a minimum standard of the park. We just don't want to get away from, you know, someone, you know, we'll just throw down five acres of grass and call it good. So we want to make sure we're serving our residents and our growing community.
Okay, I definitely appreciate that. And obviously, one of the longstanding comments we get is make sure we protect the shoreline. And I know you guys are looking at aggressively doing that. So that's not my direct question. I think it's worth touching on after what, I, I don't know that I want to say I'm concerned about, but the closing four pages, it's pages 63 through, I think, 67, when it rolls into appendix A of this document, talk about various funding opportunities. And I think it's worth, I don't, it's written, we don't need to go through a list. But for example, CDBG, I don't recall us putting specific money from our CDBG into the parks. I think we focused primarily on housing. I could be wrong on that, but insofar as we're not, I want to flag that for a future CDBG conversation. I guess I probably looking past you to Director White and Director Buckley as well. I think that's valuable, you know, looking at some of these, you know, the Recreation Conservation Office grants, you know, as far as preservation and other opportunities where we might be able to build some trails, some ADA trails alongside the river. You know, you look at what's happening in Richland, they've got a handful of parks, a couple miles apart, but there's a connecting trail, right? And I think we, I personally often look past the value of Chihuahua. I mean, there is a lot of great play infrastructure for the kids. There's also various gazebos for rent and stuff like that. But, you know, it's kind of, there's just a lot of land too, right? So I think insofar as we can look at what Richland's done successfully of connecting park to park to park, but also allowing access to that would be beneficial. But again, I think just looking to the future and funding, I saw that there's a shortfall of what we're going to need. And rather than going out for bonding, which is not preferable, or not raising taxes, where we can pull some grant funds, you know, or utilize other, and I do want to highlight this, donations and public-private partnerships. Two very distinct thoughts, but you know, insofar as someone has the land or land trades. There are opportunities where members of the community who are longstanding may want to attach their name to, you know, XYZ trail, right? I think where we can trade or have, receive a donation for a tax credit or however that works. I defer to Darcy on that. You know, that would be unofficial. And then public-private partnerships, I'm a big fan of that. I would have loved to have seen our aquatics facility go that route. Unfortunately, we didn't get anyone to bite from the private entity, and so we're doing it on our own. But insofar as we can look at that for the future and not have to have our residents foot the bill, it'd be wonderful. So those are just some thoughts to throw out there. Again, I think aggressively the city can pursue its use of CDBG. And then I'll offer my time and, and, you know, if you do have any private entities interested in a public-private partnership, I'm always happy to be, you know, an arm, obviously, one of seven council members, not speaking for councils as a whole. But I would love to see that. So just, those are some thoughts. I think it's wonderful. I appreciate MIG's work, your staff's work, just some thoughts of where we can hopefully make up some of the net negatives and have a wonderful park system. We do have a great park system as it is, and I know we can make it even better.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Just a good comment. I think it's a great presentation. I did see, I was going to ask, was there going to be a lot more conversation about ADA accommodations? But I did find it on page 32 of that. But honestly, I would like to see even more emphasis on that. Or some more conversation, or what would that look like in every park, not just specific parks? That, that accessibility is there under those ADA guidelines would be nice to see. So it's a nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Men.
Thank you. I liked the presentation as well. It was very well. I did have a question for Director Ratkai. I know you said 44 acres in the Broadmore area. Now, is that spread throughout? Or are we talking like one big park? I mean, can we ever see like something like a playground of dreams with water paths? Something that our youth can be proud of in our city, not having to go to the other county? Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, I think we have a community park that would be, you know, 44 acres of neighborhood parks are typically going to be interspersed. They're going to be a smaller set of acreage. These, the numbers I got from community development this morning are basically just at this level of service. That's what the total acreage would be. Looking at a community park and looking at that in the northwest area, that's where we would see more of your playground of dreams, your larger community park area. So that's definitely planned in that part of the, the park there, the part of the community out there as well. So, but a lot of this is just, these are just the levels of service and the acreages. And over the coming months and years, we'll be working side by side with community development to make sure that we're implementing those.
Okay. So as of right now, we actually don't know like what kind of acreage we have here.
Not, not specifically.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Councilmember Roach.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor Pretamaloni. I just wanted to add to, add some of my own comments to this. I thought it was a great presentation, particularly just the amount of participation that was had with the community. What I gathered from it is that we're doing a good job with our parks and except, so we need to keep replicating what we are currently doing. But some of the comments over this past year, I think, are worth taking note of is, one in this park's presentation was just the, the equity component, access to parks in the census tracts area, central to east Pasco, an improvement there to build off of what another council member had mentioned. Not only are we trying to do public-private partnerships, which we, we have done with the development of neighborhoods and dedicating certain parks in neighborhoods, but the public, public partnership as well with the school districts. I know we have some smaller parks built adjacent to school playgrounds. And those are great ways to maximize on what we already have. There was a younger gentleman that came before us here, and he wasn't a gentleman, he was a kiddo. And he was a kid with a disability. And so his point to us was not just increasing the amount of parks, but increasing the accessibility within the parks that we currently have. And so you, Director Ratkai, you mentioned something about trying to make our parks, instead of throwing down just, you know, a bunch of green space, making sure that they have appeal to all ages. Another public-to-public partnership that we could maximize on, hopefully with the WSU master gardeners. They have a demonstration garden in Kennewake. But I think that's something that appeals to a little bit of an older population of, you know, the avid gardener who wants to know about butterfly gardens and ziriscaping and all that sort of stuff. So those are some things to add to the, I guess, the diversity of what we're appealing to within our parks and who we're appealing to. Thanks.
Thank you. And so I do have a couple of questions and comments, and I'll echo a lot of the sentiments here. You know, we're both proud of our park system and then still recognize that there's a long way for us to go from where we are to where we need to go. I will note that we, we staffed about a dozen positions, I think mostly focused on, on this, on Parks and Rec this last year. I will note that some of those I know were for facilities. We were, we were way behind in current facilities, let alone looking at future facilities in terms of maintenance as well. So question for you, Director Ratkai, is we saw that large kind of gap, we're in the lower quartile approximately for cities of our side in terms of maintenance. Does the budget that we approved and are now implementing, does that get us into a better state with that? Or is that accounting for the additional budget we've already approved?
That's prior to the budget we already approved. I can give a proper, a newly reflected quartile number for the council, once I run some calculations on our current staff. We are able to, we divide our parks maintenance into zones. And so with the positions approved by city council this biennium, we've created another zone, which will enable to have a team focused on less acreage, which makes a little bit more attention coming there. In particular, our downtown plazas and the Farmer's Market Plaza, Peanuts Park, a little bit more focus on that. So we've been able to, I, I'm not sure the right term. We're able to devote more, more people to a smaller area right now. So we're growing that maintenance need as well. Part of that also was a park ranger program and bringing back, bringing that back to the community, which will help with not only our stewardship of facility and gazebo rentals, but also just general monitoring of the parks, making sure they're clean, making sure they're kept up well. And so, yeah, we'll be able to get a new calculation to the city council. I'm curious myself and certainly see that we're growing our maintenance needs as we have groundskeepers per acre and, and looking at that.
Agreed. Appreciate that. The other thing that I want to emphasize, I guess, and I know I've asked about this before, and I'll be honest, Director Ratkai, if you've answered this before, I've forgotten your answer. So I apologize in advance if that's the case. This plan has a very limited amount of conversation about facilities. For example, the MLK Center, we've managed to, to get about $4 million in grants for an update and expansion of that facility. However, in terms of actual facilities, community centers and such, this plan maybe dedicates, I couldn't find more than about cumulatively about a page of talking about things that weren't outdoor recreation. But those are really an essential and a very capital-intensive part of our budgeting process and our planning for our community, as well as the year-round recreation. When will be or how, or what forum or fashion will be talking about community facilities like the MLK Center?
Certainly not had a whole lot of facilities included with this plan as we were focused on outdoor recreation. We're bringing up the facilities on a case-by-case basis. So certainly the MLK Center's been a primary focus. We look at our downtown plazas and Peanuts North and Peanuts Park as a park facility. So they were addressed a little bit in here as well. But tangible facilities such as, you know, West Side Community Center, we're mainly going to focus on that through the capital improvement plan. But we can certainly devote some more time to planning those types of facilities in addition to just our normal buildings around that are city-owned on a separate basis. So.
I appreciate that thought. There's, when we're looking at things like, well, the MLK Center specifically, I know we'll get into much, much greater detail on that, hopefully in the very near future. But, you know, there's been a lot of demand and interest in, you know, performing arts facilities and other community facilities, cultural facilities. And really, this plan is just really kind of silent on those sort of things. And so it'd be hard for me to look at this plan and find out ways we're going to be able to implement things like that of actually looking at that sort of facility. And if it's not in this, if it's not intended to be in this plan, that's okay. But I don't know right now what the mechanism is for us to have those conversations and make that, that, that community-wide plan of what community center exists that we, in the future, what does the MLK Center serve? How do those overlap and amplify each other? What can, what else can we do in downtown to amplify some of those things where, where, you know, we're, we're kind of lacking any sort of cultural facilities? We have the potential, the need, but we don't have the, the planning for it. So I don't want to put you on the spot of trying to answer that question right now. But I'm, I will note that this plan is, is dearth of that information, at least from what I can tell. The other thing I'll say is that I was a little bit disappointed and both in the Broadmore plan as well as in this plan, that the lack of specificity in terms of how we're going to manage and protect our waterfront and, and open access for the public to our waterfront and, and such. So it was, so there's a lot of, a lot of good content in here that's very high level in a lot of cases. It gets in the weeds in a couple of spots, which is, which is, you know, good for me. But I was noticing that there was like, like, so I, I kind of, kind of want to know what our plan is. Like, what are we going to do with the gravel pit, right? When that, when that lease ends at some point in time, you know, what's that going to look like from a recreation standpoint? How are we going to connect to the river beyond, you know, just looking at the fact that there's a portion of the river that is owned by the Corps of Engineers? We know that partnership can be fraught with difficulties, given our current experiences. How are we, how are we connecting our community to that waterfront and making sure there's open and usable access along that? I was disappointed in the lack of detail in both this and the, and the Broadmore plan, which I know I brought up in discussion with the Broadmore plan. I don't want to overly, be overly prescriptive in our plans. These are supposed to be master plans, not detailed capital plans. But that, that is still of, of high concern for me and it's high interest of the community. So if this, again, if this plan isn't the right spot to call that out, I, I want in some form or fashion to understand what our plan really is for those sort of facilities.
And we can certainly bring that to the council.
All right. Appreciate that. I think that's all I have. Last call from the council.
Just one more thing, and it's kind of in the same vein as what you're talking about. Mayor Pretamaloni, it's that one of the things that was brought up in this presentation was the idea of the city of Pasco being the size that it is. As it is, we do not have a parks, a dedicated, just independent parks and rec department. And, you know, I'll just say I got a little sneak preview this year, this winter into operationally how that changed because we've been participating in basketball as a program and Parks and Rec for a number of consecutive years. And this year, what that meant for, for us as a family who was participating in that was that there was so much participation, a good problem to have, that those games were shorter. A a good problem to have that those games were shorter. Um and the other piece of it was that there were so many teams that facilities were lacking. And um just noticing how this the stacked uh practices were were back to back and it was really. Um we're all vying for the same space to do the same thing and so. Um I think that really resonated with me in this presentation that we do have facilities to look at and maybe the consideration of. Of how do we, as we continue to grow, carve out that department to be its own department?
Alright, thank you, uh any response to any of that from staff, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but just wanna give you the opportunity to um to clarify any further if you'd like to before I move on.
No, I think we'll uh take council's notes, we got some follow ups and some data to bring back as well as some future planning and uh. We'll collaborate interdepartmentally and uh bring some information forthcoming.
So I think the original intent would have been to see this um next Monday, w- am I hearing that it's gonna take a little more runway to make sure that we've got a couple of things buttoned up here? Or do you feel that this is going to be, uh that everything that council has brought up of concerns or questions will be uh more appropriately addressed at a different venue?
Um I think uh we'll certainly review, I think our initial plan and our current plan is to bring it back next week, the plan in and of itself. I think the feedback we received from council this evening warrants, um you know, a separate venue and and separate items to bring forth um in collaboration with staff. That's just staff's two cents.
Thank you, alright, so if if any member of public wants to comment on it, we expect to see it perhaps next Monday. Um and that would be the time where coun- where council will be looking at that for potential approval, so. Alright, with that, thank you all very much, now with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, um item six, executive session. So we will be, there was a need for executive session, which is anticipated to last for twenty minutes. The executive session topics include discussion with legal counsel about legal risks of current or proposed action per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero. One I. And consideration of the minimum offering price of of the sale or lease of real estate, if there's a likelihood that disclosure would decrease the price per RCW forty-two dot thirty. Dot one one zero one C. The factors influencing the price include sale price and land use considerations. Um so with that, we'll be meeting for twenty minutes, so we'll we'll be back at um, we'll call it at seven fifteen, so we'll be meeting for twenty-three minutes. Thank you.
With that, we are back from executive session and we will move on to item number seven. Items for discussion continued. First up, seven A, twenty twenty-two Comp Plan Amendment Docket. Director White.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. For council's benefit, this is the once yearly cyclical amendment process. The goal tonight is to familiarize council with the applications we've received. Half dozen of those or so are from the city itself. But you would particularly note that the public hearings on the amendments will be conducted next Monday, the twentieth, and then there'll be a gap in time where staff will prepare ordinances and come back to council for a decision on each of the sixteen land use amendments. I'll turn that over now to Mr. Gonzalez, who will give council a very brief rundown on the applications received.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem and members of council. Again, this is the second part of our comprehensive plan amendment docket process. You may recall back in the fall that there was a resolution by council to establish the docket. And tonight wraps up, gets close to us wrapping up the formality of adopting the docket. In terms of the format for tonight's meeting, I'll run through the evaluation criteria that are codified in the Pasco municipal code about what constitutes appropriate for a comprehensive plan amendment or not. I'll summarize the amendments themselves. The Growth Management Act requires that all comprehensive plan amendments be considered concurrently, so we can evaluate them as one, although there are each individual applications. And then I'll run through each application themselves. And you can feel free to answer, ask any questions throughout the presentation. So again, a quick rundown of the criteria for which staff is basing our eventual decisions on. The proposal bears, amendment bears a substantial relationship to the public health, safety, and welfare and protection of the environment. The proposed amendment is consistent with the requirements of that's Growth Management Act and with the portion of the city's adopted comprehensive plan not affected by the amendment. It corrects an obvious mapping error. We have several of those for your consideration today. And it identifies a deficiency in the comprehensive plan, which we also have some of those in our amendment docket this year as well. Additional factors include the impact, the effect of the physical environment, the effect on open space and natural futures, et cetera. The compatibility with the impact on adjacent land uses in surrounding neighborhoods, the adequacy of and impact on community facilities, utilities, roads, that's making sure a level of services can be maintained. The quantity and location of land, that'll be something that'll be important for us to summarize this evening as well. And also going into the projected uses, densities, and any other effect and aspects of the city's adopted comprehensive plan. So a summary of the amendments on the twenty-two docket. So there were a total of sixteen applications that made it onto the docket. There were eighteen originally, there's a typo there, my apologies. There was originally eighteen applications. One was withdrawn by the applicant and one application was denied to be placed on the docket back in the fall. There are ten private applications, meaning those are applications submitted by private developers, private parties, landowners or representatives of them or for them. There are six initiated by us at the city of Pasco. Three of them would be considered map corrections, that's correcting deficiency or discrepancy between the land use and the zoning or the use, the current use. Two of the applications have pending environmental impact statements associated with them. One of them includes a master plan and that's the Broadmoor Plan, which we'll go into this, this evening. So if there's no questions yet, I'll move forward with running through these sixteen applications. So the first application is a proposed amendment that would change the land use from medium density residential to mixed residential and commercial. It's roughly four, just under four acres. It's located northwest of the Broadmoor and Burns intersection. This application actually came through towards the tail end of our major update of the comprehensive plan. The applicant withdrew their application because of the timely, because of the timing and then resubmitted when we opened up the cycle for the twenty twenty-two docket. Staff has received comments in both favor and in opposition of the proposal, but generally believes that the, the change to the mixed residential, commercial land use would increase the diversity of uses, the potential uses, certainly aligned with the comprehensive plan goals and policies. So the second.
Sorry, one second, Mr. Gonzalez, if I could just, one of the questions I had is a general question that applies to, I think, many of, many of these, especially ones that are moving towards a mixed residential, commercial. We're in the process of looking at a potential new zoning designation or an expanded zoning designation from the waterfront district to a mixed use development. In our comp plan, we'd indicated one thing, in this case, mixed residential, commercial. And now we're, we're looking at potentially codifying that or we've had a proposal to potentially codify that in a way that spells out something very different than residential or commercial zoning within that. Can you help me understand how, how those things interact together? This also will apply in a different fashion to downtown and the, and the looking at that. So could you, the mixed use first and then downtown?
Yes, absolutely. So the proposal for the mixed use zoning district, which would amend our current waterfront development district, would be a zoning district that would be permitted in the mixed residential and commercial land use. Right now, the mixed residential, commercial land use is sort of, it, it offers quite a bit of flexibility for the landowner or the applicant associated with a pending development. It allows, for the most part, most residential zoning districts and both our, and our C-one, so commercial retail services, a zoning district would also be a permitted use, under permitted zone under the mixed residential, commercial land use. There's a follow-up application initiated by the city that would include a potential adoption of a mixed use zoning district to also be a permitted zoning district of the mixed residential and commercial land use. So if that code amendment were to be adopted, essentially the mixed residential and commercial land use would allow for R-one, R-two, R-three, and R-four. So all of our residential zoning districts, it would allow for C-one, so the retail, a commercial zoning district, and also the specific mixed use zoning district, which is kind of a combination of all, of all of those.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So it'd be one option allowed under this, this Comp Plan designation. There's one zoning designation that someone could apply for reapplication to, for mixed use within this.
Correct, yeah. Each of these applications will require a follow-up rezones, essentially, which would go through the hearing examiner criteria and then be back in front of the council.
Great. And then when we get to the downtown, will you please speak to that and how changing the downtown zoning designation, how that would interact with the properties there? I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I'd like to have a similar but different conversation, understanding that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And with each of these applications in the agenda packet, staff did provide our findings based on the criteria. And if council would like me to dive into those, I certainly can. But with the public here next week, tonight, want to just summarize all of these again for the council this evening. So the next proposal is for a, again, a land use amendment of just over two acres. This is located north, northwest essentially of Argent and Road sixty-eight, south of Interstate one eighty-two, south of the FCID Canal. The proposal would change, is intending to change the land use from low density residential to mixed residential and commercial. Sites remain vacant for several, several decades. I think it still is vacant. There might be an old house on one of the parcels. The applicant behind this has been working on rezones for the past several years on the properties to the south. For this, they needed a land use amendment to get to a potential project that they had in mind. Again, staff did receive one comment in opposition to the proposal, but generally looks favorably upon the proposal due to the proximity to two very busy corridors at Road sixty-eight and Argent, two very important economic corridors for the city of Pasco. And the mixed residential, commercial land use offers a variety of flexibility for the, the end use. So CPA or comprehensive plan amendment two zero two two zero zero three is a proposal of roughly one hundred ninety-seven acres. This is located on, south of A Street, in between South Road forty and Oregon Avenue. The proposal is seeking to amend the comprehensive plan land use from industrial to mixed residential and commercial. In total, it encompasses roughly one hundred ninety-seven acres. A staff did issue a determination of significance, essentially requiring the development environmental impact statement. Staff has provided information in the staff report about where the DEIS currently is in terms of its status. Staff is working with the applicant to try to get that environmental document to a finish line that would meet the requirements of the EIS thresholds. And it identifies in the staff report certainly some, some potential complexities due to the compatibility or incompatibility of the potential for increasing residential households near, within the immediate proximity of active ongoing development for industrial uses.
So I, I think this one has merit in deep discussion. I don't know if we want to touch on that now, run through the rest and then come back to this. I'm indifferent as to how either council or staff wants to address it. But just given the volume of land and what's being proposed versus what is existing and what's being built, I think this, this does merit some further conversation. So again, I'm happy to stop here, take some time on it, or we can circle back. Does anyone have any preference?
My, I would propose that perhaps we want to wait till after the public hearing so we can make sure that we're not just having one side of conversation on it might be, might be prudent. But if you have some specific questions, I would, my, my thought would maybe raise them right now and then.
Yeah, all right, all right. So I'll just dive into this. One of the things, obviously, seeing how successful Roche's been in the past with similar, but obviously not as intensive development, at least as the way it's surrounded. You know, I, I guess my caution or my concern here is I, I hope that we're successful in working with this project and looking at how many letters in support, people who live in Tierra Vida, current residents, realizing the value of that community within a community. You know, I, I guess I'll wait till we hear what we hear in the public hearing, but I think there's absolute value. I know that staff is concerned about, just based on the findings of what could occur. But I, I do think there's value in ensuring that we do everything we can to try to advance this project, seeing again, the historical success of taking something from a lighter, you know, industrial area, maybe not as intensive use, given what we're proposing with Amazon. But I, I think, you know, there's a, a history with the city, I think, that we have to contemplate here, at least from a policymaker. So I'll offer that and then we'll go through the hearing and see what more their discussion.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Please continue.
Thank you. So the next application is for an amendment from the low density residential to medium density residential land use, approximately thirty-two acres. This is located north of, north on Broadmoor Boulevard, west of Broadmoor Boulevard, north of Burns Road. No determination, I'm sorry, determination of non-significance was issued in early June. Again, I think in summary, probably should have started with this. We haven't seen any proposals that would decrease residential densities. All of the proposals this evening are either going to amend it to a more flexible land use that would potentially allow for higher densities or just a, a very specific change from, in this case, like others you'll see this evening, low to medium density residential land use. Obviously, with the rapid growth of the city, staff is supportive of this proposal and also notices that the medium density also has a low to a high range. So while typically they would allow them to do a variety of units, whether it be apartments or duplexes, single family detached is still permitted and it may likely be a potential use here, pending on what the applicant's interests are.
Mr. Gonzalez, I just want to make a comment for this item as well as the upcoming items. Mister Gonzalez, I just wanna make a comment for this item as well as the upcoming items uh that. As some of these are on major arterials and they are. Um just prime location for a good access to transportation and um as well as pedestrian, future pedestrian areas. Um the. The concern that staff or the conclusion that staff has come to in many of these these applications that have this. Mixed, commercial, residential um. Applications are that. While we need housing, and that is obviously a need, we also um. Need those commercial areas as well, and so if they were to go to. Uh full residential, and this is, I believe, right on Broad Broadmore Boulevard, is that correct? Um that we lose the opportunity for a commercial. And so that I share that same sentiment with staff in some of these that are on Sandifer or Burns or Broadmore Boulevard. Where, you know, it is, from my experience on the planning commission, uh good to have more dense. More commercial at those those nodes, those intersections and more dense housing. Um along those major arterials and then to kind of grade. To lower densities as we get further away, and so that would, that's just my comment to make on majority of these, but. I think it is great that most of these applications are to increasing. Uh residential density as opposed to decreasing.
So this next proposal um actually does a little bit of both, um this is an item that you may recall during the discussions of the conference planning urban growth area. Expansion a couple of years ago. Uh this is a parcel uh just over twelve acres uh located in a recently um annexed and expanded urban growth area north of Burns Road. Um just east of Convention Drive. Um the proposal is to amend the commercial land use to a mixed residential and commercial land use during the. Uh comprehensive plan and then urban growth area discussions uh several years ago, staff expressed concerns similar to. What you had just brought up, council member and councilwoman, and uh uh we've uh been in discussions with the applicant, um there is no uh determined. Rezone yet associated with this project, um but this in particular uh due to its proximity, not only to. Eventually, the development of a large public high school and uh uh the thousands of uh residents within the immediate proximity. Uh still um uh emphasized that if a portion of this could be retained for a commercial use in the future, then that would still satisfy the intent. Of the mixed residential, commercial land use while also allowing potential re- residential development, it's all kind of satisfying both. Aspects of that, so staff is expressing the staff report that if there's a portion of this that could be retained for a a small portion of a commercial use. Um then staff would certainly be supportive of it and certainly would be in line with comprehensive plan and the criteria associated with the amendments.
Mister Gonzalez, as we're seeing these uh and I guess we're probably well ahead of where Platts are. But as we're seeing some of these commercial and miss mixed residential, is there a contemplation of multi-story? Um you know, you see in more or more urbanized area where it's commercial on the bottom, and and we've talked about this in like at in the Broadmore area. Three, four stories where it's two, three, four are all residential and the bottoms commercials. Are we seeing any of that with any of these proposed plans or? Quite there?
Too too early, um and and then it's uh probably important to note, I think actually for anybody listening this evening, is that we still have our underlying zoning code. Um in place, and so our height restrictions, lot sizes, lot standards, frontage widths, et cetera. Um those are all still in place, and so while these may increase the flexibility. Um of the potential residential housing types and the diversity, et cetera, that we may see there, we still have the underlying uh zoning code still very much in effect.
So then looking at that, do we see potentially problems with our, you mentioned height in particular, um. Is that something that we may wanna really contemplate? I know we've talked about this in in like the waterfront district and a couple of other areas. In other portions of the city, may we want to contemplate, I don't need an answer tonight, but modifying our zoning or. Uh really looking forward to using some of the exemption processes to make sure that we can provide those types of living spaces.
Yeah, absolutely, in fact, um council will uh hear uh within the next uh probably month, six weeks, perhaps. Um a phase one of a pretty substantial update to the residential zoning code, which addresses um. A a lot of the uh parameters uh and and requirements that current uh housing is limited by. Lot standards, lot widths, lot sizes, et cetera. The area that we have not tackled yet is height, that that can be a little bit more of a. That can require some more detailed discussion about where we would like to see height uh around the city. Uh increasing sort of a gentle density that's spread evenly across the city versus built up in just one specific neighborhood or area of the city. Um that is very likely something that'll be a direct recommendation of the housing action plan, instead of just heights.
Thank you, one other question for you, Mister Gonzalez, um when you're. I I saw that note uh repeatedly throughout this of of when we're moving from commercial to mixed resi- residential, commercial um especially. Understanding that that designation could mean a hundred percent of it could go to residential um under our current um comp plan requirements. What do you mean, or again, let me, that's a very quick, great question, um how would we? Retain some portion of it for commercial, what what mechanism would we have to say, no, no. It's in compliance with the comp plan, but we want to continue to add this additional request or requirement.
Uh yeah, I I during the reason application review and then the the hearing process with with our hearing examiner eventually, this body. Um it'll be important for staff to highlight um what we know about the potential end use of an application, although we may not be privy to that information. It may not be known either uh by the applicant itself themselves. Um but I I think that is gonna be a concern, not only that we have in Pasco, but as discussion with the planning staff around the region is. The the increase uh due to the need for housing is potentially the the drastic loss of commercial opportunities and commercial sites. Industrial sites, et cetera, and you don't typically get those back, um so yes, we have a need for housing. I think what we want to do is is maybe take more of a magnifying glass look approach to it and identifying that this particular location. Next to a a large uh public facility like a high school, with thousands of residents. The fact that we may not want to push all of our commercial uses onto a corridor that is already experiencing level of service. Uh challenges, uh Road sixty eight, uh that we may wanna preserve some nuggets here and there. Uh for for commercial uses, now at the land use side, we're dealing with large acreages and twelve acres of commercial. Property is quite significant and I don't think any of us have the um I guess the. The magic eight pole to say what would be in a twelve-acre site or what could fit there, um but there's a lot of. Uh great commercial potential reuse, uh I'm sorry, uh retail and um. Office uses, et cetera, that that could happen in a two-acre site, and so it's important not to. If we only get one acre that's retained as commercial, that could still be really valuable for neighborhood.
I appreciate that, and obviously we don't wanna be overly prescriptive, that's harmed us. Um as a city in the past and many cities, when we try to be overly prescriptive as to thou shalt build exactly as we say. Not as the market demands and as you as a developer see this, but as I recall, when we went through the um our current comp plan process. Our transportation element um was contingent on a mix of commercial and residential. Um and 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 neighborhood, commercial um areas. So I'm I'm very concerned about this as well, and I I guess I'm I'm looking for understanding of how we could. We could do that, and what I'm hearing you say, it's gonna be tricky at best. Um to to understand how we can make sure that we 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 retain that, those elements that we we the underpinnings for how we approve this. So um. Yeah, I I guess um I would love some more follow-up, I don't wanna weigh down this meeting in that, but I would very much want to understand this um on how how it applies to. A a a bunch of these, there's there's a number of these where we could, these could go a hundred percent residential, which I think would be um. Good for our housing stock, bad for the long-term functioning of our transportation and neighborhood um neighborhoods, thank you.
So this next proposal uh is located uh just south of Wrigley Drive, uh in between uh Burden and Wrigley Drive. Uh between uh Convention and um. I can't see that on Clemente Lane, my apologies, uh the proposal is for roughly two and a half acres. Uh to go from commercial to mixed residential, commercial. We're not sure what the end application is, um I think the applicant on this just wanted to have some additional flexibility. Uh certainly, uh adding residential uh in a sea of commercial in this case uh would be beneficial for potential tenants or or residents, homeowners, et cetera. Um and if it's uh that uh continued as a commercial use, that would certainly fit in line with what the current comprehensive plan land use calls for. Um this proposal, just like every other uh at the uh rezone and then certainly at the permit stage, would be required to. Submit their own SEPA checklist and ensure that um level of service, concurrency. Um with regards to transportation, parks and open space, uh utilities, et cetera, that those all have been adequately addressed or mitigated. Um and and that goes for this and every other application, um eventual application associated with the land use amendments this evening. This is a proposal to go from a current commercial to a mixed residential and commercial uh. Site, uh rough, just under five acres, this is located on Chapel Hill Boulevard, uh just uh west of Saint John Drive. Um a portion of the site is already used as a potential, is is used as a commercial use, I think an RV uh trailer park or park. Um we don't know yet what the applicant would like to do with this site, but again, similar to others, is simply just trying to open up the flexibility of what could be. Um eventual uh project associated with the site. Um similar to the others, this one's located next to what will be a very busy corridor in the future, uh with Broadmore Boulevard and obviously the uh. Interchange at one eighty two, um and so eventually when a a project and a rezone are associated with this land use are um. Uh come through to the city planning department and certainly the SEPA checklist, level of service, concurrency standards, et cetera, will be uh reviewed for. Um adequacy, et cetera.
Mister Gonzalez, is this a a residential RV park or is this a commercial RV sales location?
I I can't, I I don't know, actually, I think it's a commercial. But I I don't know.
Yeah, there are, it it's a little of both, there are um both of those uses on this parcel. And and the adjacent parcel as well.
All right, thank you.
This is another proposal in the north of the Broadmore uh master plan area, this is again just north of uh. The first comprehensive plan amendment application and and south of one we just uh listened to recently um this evening. Uh this is a proposal from low-density residential to mixed residential and commercial, covers almost twenty acres. Um applicant has expressed that they're just trying to identify a potential use in the future, um there's there's no urgency behind um an end. Uh project associated with the site, but the uh mixed residential, commercial land use offers them an opportunity to react to what happens in her Broadmore. Within the Broadmore planning area, certainly the to the potential uh land use amendments to the north and south and allows them to kind of react. And see what the community uh may be best served by, whether it's a load, a a residential site, a commercial uh use. Or some combination um of of both. This is a proposal uh located uh just north of of West Court Street, east of uh US three ninety five on North Twenty-Eighth Avenue. Um the proposal is to change the land use of approximately eight and a half acres from commercial to high-density residential, the site has remained vacant for. It's always been vacant, uh the the application uh for high-density residential offers a a pretty unique opportunity to take advantage of existing commercial. Uh uh and retail uses within the immediate vicinity, uh there's actually coffee shops and restaurants nearby, this would offer a pretty unique opportunity. With the um access to the interstate, public transportation, uh US three ninety five, uh and then a primary corridor in West Court Street. Uh for the potential uh development of a high-density residential project. I I think one thing I would uh uh share with council is that what's unique about sixteen applications that they truly do cover most, if not all areas of the city, which. Maybe rare, I'm I'm not sure, this is our First Amendment docket in uh about about seven years. So we're seeing quite a bit of a potential interest throughout the entire city.
Mister Gonzalez, on that last item there, I'm giving the proximity to, you know, the highway there and the amount of traffic again. Can you just help me understand better what the process is for determining non-significance in some of these items, when we're doing a pretty substantial change from a high-density commercial? Right next to a major transportation hub, um and adding residential, uh so in this case, it was a non-significance, in other cases, it's not. Can you just help me understand what the the process is? I I don't necessarily need to speak to each item, but just process-wise.
Yeah, when when we review the SEPA checklist, we obviously re- as a non-project, each of these don't have a project associated with them. Um we review them sort of at a a high level to identify other potential applications that can be. Um addressed in a follow-up of SEPA, so with this potential project. Not only would a the next rezone require a SEPA, but so too would the eventual project application, so. This case, we know that the applicant is interested in a higher-density residential project, so. Uh they would likely apply for potentially an R three or an R four zoning district, maybe even their mixed residential, commercial. Uh I'm sorry, the mixed-use zoning district, if if that's adopted in place. In time, that requires a rezone, and then the permit associated with their project would also require uh. The SEPA checklist, and at that time, at the project review, that's when we're gonna be able to really take a look and and identify, they're proposing. A hundred units, and what's the impact on transportation? What's the impact on the adjacency to uh US nine ninety five on the potential tenants or residents of the site? Um and vice versa, and so that's when it gives us a little bit more of an opportunity because of the detail provided. And associated with the project-level review to identify specific mitigations that may be necessary to uh. Uh uh to mitigate a potential um uh concern, uh rather uh to the residents or to the natural or built environment itself.
Thank you. Um Cosmo Roach.
Mister Gonzalez, the the commercial adjacent to this parcel is a manufacturing plant. Permobile, um what is the? What level of designation, what commercial level designation is that business next door?
My recollection is that it's C three.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Please continue.
Uh this is a proposal located uh on West Court Street, uh northwest of Road sixty eight and Court Street. It's actually the site of a of a future, um actually ongoing public works project with the. Infrastructure uh improvement there, intersection improvement there, uh the proposal is for roughly six and a half acres to change the land use from commercial to, again, the mixed residential. Commercial, in this case, um it's almost falls into the map correction. Um category where there's existing commercial and medium density uh within the parcel site. Um so the applicant is just trying to uh uh clean this up, and we agree with with the uh uh with the process here. Um uh to clean this up, so it all be under the mixed residential, commercial land use and let the residential part that is currently existing to the north. Uh be in place, and then if there's a potential application for uh commercial to the south, then that would be permitted as currently today or some combination of. Um uh again, staff uh rel- relative to the location on the Road sixty eight and Court Street corridors believes that this would be uh. Uh supported by the criteria of the comp plan amendments and also the uh general comprehensive plan goals and policies. All right, um now we're gonna get into the city-initiated uh comprehensive plan amendment, comprehensive plan amendments, and the first one. Is associated with establishing a downtown land use that covers roughly a hundred and fifty or so acres, um it encompasses the current C two zoning district. It encompasses the um uh current uh central business district overlay uh zone that currently exists. And uh this is a direct recommendation um uh from the downtown Pasco master plan, which was adopted earlier this year by by this council. Um the intent would be to amend uh the existing uh central, the downtown Pasco, um I'm sorry, the central business district overlay. And amend that to become the downtown Pasco overlay district, and the purpose of that is because the current. Central business district overlay offers quite a bit of flexibilities that are recommended strategies of the compre- I'm sorry, the downtown Pasco master plan, including. Um the uh exemption for off-street parking, um which would be extremely helpful for a lot of our smaller businesses, uh businesses that are wanting to get started and existing. Uh 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 businesses that want to expand. Um not uh being required uh to build um an over amount of parking than maybe the market may call for. Um this certainly again aligns with the master plan strategy of updating the land use and the zoning. Um it it the strategy for that reads that Pasco's future land use map should be updated to a new designation specifically for downtown. So this is sort of the first step of many dominoes, uh domino steps where we would build uh and create a tailored. Zoning and development standard that would apply to the um uh to the area that you see here shaded in the in the light pink. Uh providing a little bit more flexibility, uh more based on form, um that uh would require significant, obviously, uh business and community outreach. Um and then one that's in some ways already underway as we begin the uh work through the implementation stages of the downtown Pasco master plan. We got a lot of phone calls when we noticed for this, uh cause there was a lot of notices sent because of all the uh the the density in the area. Um we we want to uh uh emphasize that we are not demolishing any building, we're not building anything either. This is simply an opportunity for us to um sort of cradle the existing zoning districts within um this boundary. Um and allow them to continue to be in existence, of course, um but then uh the city could work with um our consultant team at Framework, obviously under. Um, and allow them to continue to be in existence, of course. Um, but then, uh, the city could work with, um, our consultant team at Framework, obviously under council direction, planning commission guidance and. Uh, the input from the community to really tailor, um, the development standards of what we would like to see beyond sort of the Lewis Street, Columbia, Clark corridors. But really into an area that what many folks said felt like downtown, uh, during the public engagement process, uh, with the master plan.
Great. So, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, I think I understood you, um, earlier to say if I was to project that forward, this doesn't change any of the zoning. Um, this may affect the overlay district and what we want that to do and how we want that to play out. Currently, the overlay district is pretty, um. Pretty, pretty much a placeholder, um, or not much more than a placeholder right now. And I think the zone, the C-two zone is mostly what we use to control our downtown area. But that will be future actions that we'd be looking at taking after this is in place. Um, to figure out what we want to do and when we want to kind of roll out a zoning change for, uh, for different areas or potential proposal one.
Correct. This allows us to then come back to the planning commission. And council, um, and, uh, develop and share potential proposals for, uh, zoning code amendments or brand new code amendments, uh, uh, I'm sorry, standards. That fall under the, the general, um, the, the premise, the whole intent of establishing a, a, a special land use for our downtown, uh, area.
Great, thank you.
I, for this one, I'll, I'll kick this to, uh, Director White, who will introduce this item.
Well, um, council obviously has seen, uh, many, many, uh, views of the Broadmore master plan area and it's, I think just last week, uh, we noted that, uh, this is roughly a twelve-hundred acre area. Clean slate in the middle of a metro area of substantial size. It's just not an opportunity that happens very often. Uh, the, um, existing, uh, comprehensive plan designations. Simply don't account for the direction of the Broadmore master plan. This is a master plan that has been in earnest developing for the last three or four years. It actually started prior to, uh, two thousand and four. Uh, many, many years ago, but the vision has always remained very consistent in spite of the different planning commissions, the different councils. And that's been a pedestrian friendly environment with a mix of uses. Uh, it, it would be an environment that promotes walkability. And, uh, also accounts for a substantial, um. Commercial land use space to assist with, uh, something that was brought up just a few minutes ago, the, uh, uh, travel demand, uh, forecasting that was accomplished with our, our. Our comp plan update. So, uh, as council knows, uh, we're preparing a environmental impact statement that goes with the master plan. Um, you did see a copy of the master plan, uh, last weekend, last week, I think, and, um. You'll be seeing another version of that shortly with, uh, some minor edits and corrections. And I know, uh, let me pause just for a minute. There was also a question on, uh, the availability of parks and open space. Uh, there are some diagrams, uh, in your packet, uh, that show some of that, uh, how that's envisioned to look. You, you can see, uh, again, through the attachments in your report, some of the roadway designations, the freight routes, the pathway systems. Uh, those are all combining to, uh, hopefully promote this area into something that again, has remained remarkably consistent over the years. Staff has, in particular. Involved many departments, uh, the, uh, the council approved a tax increment financing program for roughly thirty-six million dollars or so. Worth of transportation improvements. Uh, there was a considerable amount of work by Public Works, uh, getting the, uh, interchange improvements, uh. Approved. And, uh, there's. It is, over the years, it has touched literally every department. So I think, uh, this is our best foot forward with, um. Um, proposing, uh, what we hope will be a vision for the, uh, Broadmore area master plan, not to say that it won't be back in front of council. Because as we go through this and start implementing some of the zoning criteria that go with the line use designations, things will come up and I anticipate that. Uh, this, uh, this plan will, uh, probably be, be back in front of council within a year and a half, two years.
So we do have, uh, I'm sorry, other questions for Director White?
Uh, are you going to continue on this item?
Um, I did want to share a few, uh, maps, um, that are associated with the master plan, just to give both council and community, uh, kind of, uh, uh, an eye on, on what to expect. Uh, based on the planning and the EIS effort. And, and just to kind of step back a little bit, um, I think last week during the groundbreaking was many, uh, uh. It was the first time many folks actually stepped inside. The Broadmore planning area for a lot of us on the staff side, a lot of us just look at it on a map. We're on site, but never actually in the site. Um, and just to kind of give council an idea of how, how large twelve-hundred acres is. Uh, downtown Seattle from roughly Pioneer Square, just north of the stadiums to roughly where the Space Needle is, that's about sixteen-hundred acres. Vista Field is about a hundred and three acres. So this is somewhere in the middle. Um, so, um, it's a really, really exciting opportunity for us. And as Director White mentioned, um. And not all the staff that have had their hands on this and their hours on this are present today, but certainly, um, uh, city engineer John Padvorick and long-range plant coordinator Jessica Bracken behind me this evening. Have really spent a lot of time along with Public Works and if we haven't touched that department, we very will soon, um, uh, with the implementation of this. So. Uh, as Director White mentioned, this is two components to this master plan. One is the development of the master plan and the associated development regulations. So what keeps a plan from. Collecting dust on the shelf, it's implementation, which is based on the actual development regulation. So. The plan itself includes, um, very specific, precise regulations that are derived from. Uh, uh, basically implementing the vision for Broadmore. So if we want to see trees every hundred and twenty-five feet, we actually need to require trees every hundred and twenty-five feet. Um, and so this will result, um, in front of you in the near future, um, the codification of a brand new Broadmore, Broadmore master plan overlay district. Before we could get that far, we had to make, uh, significant strides in the environmental impact statement process. Um. The determination of signif- significance on this was originally issued in March of twenty seventeen. And it's gone through substantial drafts, revisions, uh, resubmittals, re-revisions, et cetera. Uh, that have allowed staff to take advantage of the works completed by Public Works, uh, with regards to the, uh, transportation mitigations necessary. Um, at, uh, the interchange in, uh, Broadmore Boulevard, certainly the network itself. Taking into account what we can, um, from the work just completed with the, uh, Parks Recreation Open Space Plan and making sure that those mitigations. Um, have been identified, the impacts have been identified, um, the mitigations have been identified, and then those mitigations have been translated into specific regulations so that. We can ensure that mitigation takes place. For an example, uh, there's roughly five hundred and ninety-six acres, I believe, of. Uh, critical area, shrub set habitat. We have a wildlife, uh, uh, an agreement with the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife to make sure that if there's a project that would, uh, interfere. Or, um, construct over that, um, shrub set mitigation, a shrub set area, that there's a mitigation associated with it. In total, uh, there's roughly a hundred and two specific, a hundred and two mitigation measures associated in the EIS. We expect to issue the final EIS, um, by Thursday of this week. So we'll run through a few maps. Um, a lot of the comments we hear, obviously from the public are fix the transportation and, and identify parks. That's really what we're going to focus on the next few slides. So this shows the proposed roadway classifications associated in the Broadmore area. This takes into account certainly our comprehensive plan. Uh, the transportation system master plan, uh, connectivity was a word that was mentioned, uh, uh, numerous times throughout the, uh, Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. This certainly enables that to happen. And, and getting back to that travel forecast, travel, um, concurrent, transportation concurrency side. It, it is not feasible to develop a area that may house upwards of seven thousand housing units or roughly twenty-one thousand residents. Thousands of new jobs without having an idea of what the road network's going to look like. So this is, um, what staff will be expecting to be built in place. There may be some wiggles here and there and some misalignments, of course. With twelve-hundred acres, but generally I would expect to see this, uh, road, we would, we should expect to see this network in place over the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and so years and so on. Uh, recreational, uh, in terms of, uh, bike, uh, facilities is also something that i- is, uh, clearly identified in the vision for Broadmore. And so this is a map that shows. Um, it kind of seen the checkered board, the, the two-way, uh, bike tracks, um, and where you see sort of the, it might be difficult on the screen, but, uh, outlined in black. That's where you would see the multi-use pathways. Those are the pathways that exist on Chapel Hill and Burns Road. Um, you can see that they interconnect and take you from Broadmore Boulevard. Um, all the way west to the shoreline and from Burns Road all the way south, um, to, um, uh, to Harris Road. This is a map. There's not a lot here, but it's important to note that, um, Broadmore Boulevard is identified both as a, uh, by the Washington State Department of Transportation. Um, as a corridor, uh, uh, economic significance, which I think we'd all agree with, uh, due to the, the significant agricultural, uh, uses north of the, the city. And it's also identified as a, um, as a, uh, I believe a T-four, so some level of freight importance, um, in the Washington State. Uh, DOT freights and good transportation system app. And so staff, particularly on our engineering side. Uh, really went through an extensive effort to identify what we could to preserve, uh, freight, uh, freight mobility, um, on Broadmore. With all the growth, it's important that we still allow. Uh, folks trying to transport goods, um, to, uh, the destinations that they need to go. I'll get into some of my favorite maps, um, now. Um, so this is a map that, uh, displays what you see underneath is a land use map, the proposed land use map associated with. Uh, alternative two of the, uh, EIS, which is what we're recommending. Uh, and you can see that, uh, we've overlaid the, uh, shoreline, the preservation of the shoreline. Um, the, uh, multi-use and bike trails, you can see those overlaid, uh, on the gridded network. And I think this answers a few things. One is what does it actually look like when we zoom out in terms of. Connecting potential, uh, commercial and residential destinations to parks and open space. And then that travel, the, the actual travel experience itself. And, uh, this is not, I think, something that really exists elsewhere in the region, certainly a limited extent, um, outside of our shorelines. Where it would allow us to, um, es- essentially connect an entire community of one more than twenty thousand residents via bike. Trail, pedestrian facilities, multi-use pathways that also function as parks and open spaces. Um, that would connect to eventual parks and open spaces, whether that's the, uh, uh, preservation of the natural habitat with the proposal of a, a raised bore rock perhaps on the shoreline. Uh, to significant, uh, public park, uh, north of, uh, Sandifer, south of, uh, Burns, along the shoreline. You can see that on the northwest corner. And then again, uh, this doesn't really include what we would require as part of the development review, which is a level of service regarding parks and open space. So if we see a proposal for. Three hundred units or seventy-five units or two hundred homes. Um, what is the amount of park and open space required with that development? And we've written that into development regulations to ensure that we get that. In a timely manner that is, is a little bit more proactive than versus reactive. Um, and I think that's. Uh, other than sort of the vision for Broadmore, one of the things that we've heard significantly over the past several years is. Ensuring that we get ahead of the development, so it's there from the get-go versus wishing we had done it. Um, this does that, um, from the start. Uh, and that sums up, um, uh, the presentation on the Broadmore master plan. Uh, when this comes before council, um, over the next several weeks, there will be, uh, both a proposal, um, I'm sorry, both a recommendation for a resolution, uh, for the master plan itself. And then an associated, an ordinance associated with, uh, uh, adoption of the amendment, uh, so this, since this would constitute, uh, several land use changes in the Broadmore master planning area.
All right, this is a big one. So any, any questions or comments from council at this time? Seeing checking heads, but I do have one question, uh, Mr. Gonzalez on this. So the green areas there where we've designated, um, open space, those are all. They have to be open space, right? Those are owned by the Corps of Engineers or in other ways restricted from having, from being developed in, in the other direction. So is there any area here within, within the comp plan, um, amendment recommendation here that designates open spaces above and beyond the legally required? We have no. Ability to do otherwise?
N- not at a site out, outside of our, uh, network that's displayed on this map. Um, outside of that, no. Um. And we've made sure that the preservation of the shoreline doesn't account for the open space calculations either. So. Um, for example, if, if an applicant, uh, wanted to, um. Uh, apply for a project and they said, well, the open space is right next to me. It's the shoreline. That doesn't count. It, it's what else are you adding on top of it? And that was our. Uh, it was our intent to make sure that we went at least above and beyond, but the minimum would call for in terms of level of service concurrency. But regarding a, a site specific for, uh, specific park uses, um, rather neighborhood commercial, I'm sorry, neighborhood or community park. No, that, that would be done at the development, um, during the development review process.
So I think my, my continued concern is that we will, uh, you know, as individual developments are made, none of them will require specifically a community park. And we will get a lot of very small regional parks, which are neighborhood parks, which are good, they're, they're important to have. But that will miss out on the opportunity to have a true regional commu- and, um, and, um, park for the, for the community, both ours and. You know, for, for people on Kennewick and Richmond who want to, you know, experience the, the, the joys that is Pasco. So, um, that continues to be a very large concern for me. Could you help me understand what the process would look like if we were to in the future want to, um, add a, the community park? Would that be a, would we have to go through a similar process where we'd have to redesignate something? Or would this be a, is it special use within existing zoning, um, and, and comp plan uses? How, how, what would that process look like? To go from where we are, if this council decided they want to designate a larger or more pick out, so to speak, in the future and, uh, uh, community park?
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to Director White on that question.
Well, I, and I think council, uh, uh, Mayor Proton Maloney, I think you heard a bit of that with the conversation on the Park and Rec Open Space Plan. Um, first of all, we would have to purchase the property, uh, for the community park. Um, it, it has been our understanding that a more appropriate location for a community park, which is anywhere from twenty to forty acres in size. Is probably more import- appropriate north of Burns Road, uh, recognizing the important. Role that the neighborhood park system plays, at least in the Broadmore area. And so I hope that answers some of your question and then I certainly invite, uh, Director Rapkai to chip in, um.
Yeah, I think certainly as Director White had said, the purchase of the land for a community park, large-scale community park, there could be some provisions within a future. Ordinance, I don't want to speculate, that would, um. Allow for development to help contribute that, contribute to that body of purchasing a large amount of land for a community park. To me, it would be pretty difficult to piece it together in Broadmore, but certainly north of Burns Road, we do have funding set aside in the CIP and are searching for. Expanded property in that area right now, uh, just to try to figure out where we can put it.
I will defer further comments from this conversation, but could you speak, Director White, to the process by which we would go through to, would we need to go through a, for a community park? Would need to. Go through a comp plan amendment to designate open spaces or is this all a conditional use or existing use within?
It's a conditional use permit, along with civic facilities of all different types, yes.
Thank you. I'll leave my comments here. Kazma Roach.
Yeah, I just want to say, it's also very disappointing to hear that. I know, you know, in council, we hear a lot of different things. I'd even heard that. Where the sand dunes were, a lot of the trees were going to be, try to reuse them into like a park plan. I mean, I, I, again, I really sit on different committees, you hear a lot of different things, but, uh. It does seem kind of disappointing that we get to this stage and then. Like no big park. Again, I had always heard that there was going to be like a big park, avenues, walkability, and then now it seems like the big park is gone. I mean. Anybody else hear any of that? I mean, again, they talked about trying to save certain aspects of the sand dunes, the vegetation, trying to incorporate it in the park. Am I lost on this one or I take it you guys have never heard that?
I, I, I think as, uh, newer staff, that wasn't something that's been part of the conversation with Broadmore in particular since I've been here, which, uh, albeit is shorter than most. Um, but I, I, I think if there's. A desire to try and, and purchase acreage to that, that scale, that. We're, we're in the midst of needing to try and accomplish that pretty quickly, just because they're trying to sell these parcels off as, as rapidly as they can. Um, obviously there's interest in housing other city facilities there that we've discussed a little bit earlier tonight. Um, but certainly not to the scale of, uh, twenty to forty acre community park.
Okay, again, I'm just kind of shocked. I mean, like, the council seems to think the same way. It just seems like it had always been that this was going to be our one chance to do something grand. Clean slate, you know, again, great commercial aspect, housing, but I always thought there was going to be a park. In this area that again, we would all be very proud of. And, uh, I realize money is very important. It just. To me, it just seems kind of a shock that now we're getting little teeny parks and it's going to be pretty much like the rest of Pasco in, in a way. Yeah, just, I guess just disappointed in this, but, uh, I guess that is what it is.
I will, I will say that, um, future or previous drafts of the master plan, I think, did include substantial parkland that is no longer in the current plan.
I'll, I'll echo that as well as seeing, seeing, uh, initial concept plans of Broadmore. There was a green belt that led from Broadmore all the way down to the river shore and. And yes, count. And yes, Councilman Mil- Milne, I will echo what you said as well, I I do recall there being a more significant park. Um that of, you know, informal casual discussion being that of something that mirrors what we have on the Richland side. Uh as Howard Damon Park, that can be community space, gathering space. Um for the region, not just Pasco, so. I'd, we'll say I'm disappointed to see it's not quite there. But overall, not that, let's not focus on the negative, this is all really wonderful as well, it's exciting to see that. The future of what might come, but that is definitely of interest to me.
Thank you, any other comments from from council? Alright, thank you, uh if you wanna continue, please?
Uh so a few more here, uh this would be the first of uh uh three map corrections. Uh this is a proposal that would amend roughly eight and a half, uh roughly eight acres um. From the commercial to the mixed resident and commercial site, now you'll notice that. Part of the commercial, you may see that in the dark red outlined, um this is the map correction part where there's already existing dwellings, residential households there. Uh not sure uh what happened during the land use zoning uh decisions, however, um this is simply an opportunity to correct a deficiency in the comprehensive land use map. Um and would allow those existing homes to continue as they rightfully should, um and then also with the parcel uh to the immediate east, allow them. Uh to develop both with a uh uh residential or a commercial component. This uh next proposal again is a map correction, this is located on West Court Street between Fourteenth Avenue and North Nineteenth Avenue, it's roughly nine acres. Again, uh the parcels that are shaded um to the south, um south alignment of Court Street. Uh the majority of these are residential uh hous- uh housing, uh this is apartment, single-family homes, duplexes, et cetera. Again, not not sure uh what what happened during the land use and zoning. Um uh but this is uh simply an opportunity for us to correct the deficiency of a map correction. And then uh we have one more, uh and this is one that's located on South Tenth Avenue, just north of the Cable Bridge. Located between A Street and West Washington Street, it's just under four and a half acres. Again, um this um has a commercial, um uh it's got a commercial land use, not industrial, that's an error. Uh and the proposal would be to change that to the mixed residential and commercial land use. Simply because there's a variety of of both housing and commercial uses. On both sides of the the tenth avenue here, so this again is is another map correction initiated by the city. We actually get quite a few calls in this corridor and along Court Street um from bankers. Who are trying to confirm the uh the zoning. And we run into an issue, and it's unfortunate because the applicant or the the, you know, can't move forward with their project. And it's simply just due to a mapping error, and this is just an opportunity to correct those, and there will be more of those likely in the next year's amendment docket. Uh this is the land, the last land use uh amendment, and this is a citywide effort uh that would um. Update and revise the land use descriptions and the criteria associated with the um. Uh the land use table and title twenty-five of the Pasco Municipal Code. There's a few minor changes here, but essentially the summary is it would add um a Broadmore, uh it would add the densities within each of the. Eventual overlay districts that would enable um the uses intended in the Broadmore planning area. Similar with the downtown uh uh a downtown-specific overlay district or the land use. Um and then the potential eventual, potential uh for the amendment of the waterfront development district into the mixed use zoning district. Um uh the, a- again, the the densities are currently constrained by multiple factors. Um there's both the lot dimensions, the zoning uh standards that we have for each zoning code. And and then Pasco actually then goes and prescribes specific density ranges. Um that likely may be a discussion that we wanna take on during the next major update of the comprehensive plan, but for now, we just wanted to make some modest changes to react to what we're seeing. On the development side, and that would be on the low density um to uh increase from two to five and amend that from uh two to five to three to six. Um and then we would clarify um some of the language in our residential zoning districts, uh there's a long list of potential. Uh housing types and uh these days, we're not sure what is being called what sometimes, and rather than do that, the intent would be as long as they can conform to the land use and zoning standards. Um then uh that we would just identify that there are a variety of residential developments permitted in this, as long as they comply with the underlying uh zoning, et cetera. And um I think it's just a duplicate page, so my apologies, that concludes uh tonight's um. Presentations on the land use amendments associated with the twenty-two docket. Um tonight's the workshop, uh there will be a public hearing that's been scheduled and noticed for uh next Monday. And then likely be back here in April for a potential recommendation of the docket, and when that comes, there will be. Uh several based on council decision and direction. Um uh each application would have its own ordinance, and each of those ordinance updates and amends are twenty eighteen, twenty thirty-eight comprehensive. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, uh questions or comments from council, uh Councilman Zrano?
So, Mr. Gonzalez, just jumping back to your last slide. Excuse me, jumping from two to five to three to six, are we seeing any half-acre lots requested within city limits? I know, obviously, we've brought in a lot north where we're gonna have to grandfather and what have you, but. Uh aside from those kind of former county and city areas, are we seeing that?
No, i- it, I think it's been quite some time, we're still seeing short plats in some areas uh that would uh. Uh be built slightly below the the three units per acre, three housing units per acre. But everything that, for the most part, that we've been ex- uh receiving at the count over the last couple of years has um. Uh uh been applications where they've had approved preliminary plots for single-family detached units. Now interested in a variety of both detached and attached housing like a duplex. Uh we've had approved projects for zero lot line or duplexes. Now uh come through as a multifamily project and. Um what's, e- even though we still have certainly quite a bit of a very rural and low-density development in in some areas of the city. Because we have the accessory dwelling unit provision, those lots are able to take advantage of providing additional units for, you know, a family member or cousin, a friend. You know, regardless, doesn't matter, uh but they're able to also provide additional housing units, and it's really kind of a. I I think the um the result of first, the adoption of the House of nineteen twenty-three amendments last January. And the combination of just the increasing need for housing, um but but and long answer is short, no, we're not really seeing applications. For uh twenty eight, uh twenty thousand square foot lots anymore.
Okay, and then just kinda moving back to the last slide, you were mentioning processes, uh obviously, tonight we're having conversation. Next week, it's gonna come for us for an actual hearing, and then uh the recommendation occurs, so. As it sits right now, we have eighteen actions, seventeen pass, one no pass essentially is 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 what I'm reading through the recommendations, is that correct?
Uh sixteen total applications, uh one staff um is recommending uh an denial of.
And so in the event that uh we we move forward with that, what happens with that project?
If if the amendments are approved and and there's an ordinance associated with them, then the next step for the applicant or the interested parties of that site. Um they could sit on that land for quite some time, or they would apply for a potential rezone or. Um a a a rezone that is compliant with the uh new land use associated with that site.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I think it's important that we have that conversation, I mean, a- again, I I know, jumping back to number three, and we've got a public hearing next week, I think. There's been some history with the builders of that who have successfully brought in a community within the community. And um I'm hoping that there's a way for staff and and the potential uh the owners to find a way. To get to a yes, and I, and there may not be, that's that's fine, I realize it's in the island of. A lot of busy, busy stuff, but again, e- everything I've heard about the, you know, tier of Uta community. My experiences down there, that it's all been positive, and I would hope that we could find a way to bring another one of those sub-communities into our city.
Alright, thank you, any other questions for or comments for uh for staff? I'll ask as well, one item, uh Mr. Gonzalez, um after the public hearings, um can items on this docket be updated? Or they basically, these are set, every, what's in front of us, recommendations, et cetera, are going to be set until it comes in front of us for ordinances?
Uh the the PMC states that there's three potential decisions, there's an approval, a denial, or a modification. Associated with each, yeah, with each application. So if it's approved, it's approved, if it's denied, it's denied. Uh some communities have a provision in their amendment process that states that if a proposal is denied, it may not come back for two years, we don't have that. Um and then there's also the third option of a modification, um and that would probably uh likely require some significant um input from council in terms of what the modification. Um but the expectations of that modification are.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I just wanna uh circle back to that same item that was just discussed, uh the application for the. The Brochi Family Trust of for that parcel and say that I'm interested in seeing. Um compatibility in that area, and if there is compatibility um with what's being proposed and what's existing in the area.
Alright, thank you, any other questions or comments for staff on this item? Alright, not hearing any, um so with that, we'll go ahead and wrap that up if uh nothing more further from staff. And I will um take us to a five-minute break though, so um we've been at this for a little while, so. Um I'll take a five-minute break, it's eight twenty-one right now, so we'll come back at eight twenty-six, thank you. Alright, with that, we will come back from a break and resume our session. Alright, we have item seven B, quarterly update, Tri-City's Animal Shelter, uh or sorry, Tri-City's Animal Control Authority and Shelter. That's important because we always get those two things mixed up, we have an animal control and we also run a shelter.
Yes.
Uh Director Rapkai?
And we certainly do run a shelter now as of uh July, so just a quick update, our quarterly update. On uh the Animal Control Authority, uh introduction of some new staff and uh. Really just a introduction of some of our new policies, procedures, and uh addressing some community concerns as well, so. Yeah, we took over the shelter last July um from Bit and Franklin Humane Society, who served um to help us out. Uh in uh uh after uh um some some troubles with contractors back in twenty twenty-one. Um since that time, city staff initially took over um. Established and worked hard to really establish new practices, uh really learn how to run an animal shelter, we had staff down there. Uh from a variety of departments helping out, um but really set a new standard, um set a new standard in just uh how we uh operate in the community. Um monitoring staff operations and uh really looking at better financial oversight as well, it helps to have uh. Director Buckley's uh finance team and a team of accountants helping us out with uh the accounting at the animal shelter. And uh we'd seen market improvements in our operational standard during this time. So, as I stated before, and has been updated to this council, the initial uh takeover was led by city staff. And uh we really seen a consistent leadership presence out there, which enabled us to um be able to hire our own uh animal shelter. And animal services manager, so we do have uh Ben Ziggan here, if you could wave. Um and stand up, so he's our um animal services manager, so he's stationed down at the animal shelter, he's got. Twenty-five years' experience, starting out in this facility um in the early nineties and uh working for City of Yakima prior to. Um his animal control lead and project manager for their department as well, so he's uh been on staff since, I believe, November, December? December, yeah, um and uh helping us really uh work through our new budget for the area as well as uh. Um help us staff the shelter with uh full full-time uh and and part-time employees for the city as well. Um we work to craft a budget during this time for operations and sheltering, and if you recall, with our different contractors previously. Um our budgets were floating around about seven hundred, seven hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred thousand, so this was for our enforcement portion only. So enforcement and animal control is obviously serving the uh ordinances of the cities of Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland. Um and then a seventy-two-hour impound hold if we had a a a dog that was loose or a cat that was found, um so that's what covered it. As you see, the uh overall budget, um previously contractors had to make up the. previously contractors had to make up the cost for long-term sheltering, food, care, veterinary care. Well, that's on the uh Animal Control Authority now and uh the City of Pasco is in a one-third share with our partner cities of Richland and Kennewick as well. So that's sort of that differentiation between a previously seen seven hundred seventy thousand dollar budget and a two million dollar budget. Um but it also outlines staffing and uh as of a couple of weeks ago or last week, we are fully staffed now with uh bona fide city employees um on the payroll. So we're pretty excited to have that as well. So just some year-to-date statistics, um this is uh just from January first on. These typically been seen as standard as we've seen year over year. Um you're gonna see a lot more loose animals uh coming up in the spring and summertime, so we're getting into busy season. Uh you do see a little bit of an uptick around New Year's of uh lost dogs, dogs that get out because of fireworks. Um some of the events there, people on vacation for the holidays, uh that sort of thing. Um so these are relatively normal. And obviously, the animal control cases that we've seen already three hundred and ninety-four as of last week. Um and that's for all three cities of Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland, and you can see the proportions. Um it's pretty well proportionate to the size of the community as well. Um so we've seen that. So some of the policies and procedures are-
Uh okay, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
Um I have a quick question. On the cats, says that we euthanize fifteen. That's like one out of every seven cats that you basically intakes. Is that a normal? Because I didn't know that we were taking down so many little cats here. I'm a dog lover, but uh still I-
Alright, okay. So those cat numbers are mostly ones that have been hit by cars and taken to the vet and were able to be saved. Uh dogs are a little bit more sturdy. They get hit by a car, they go to the vet. A lot of times um we can put the vet bill to have them repaired um so that they can be adoptable again. Uh the cats would just be too far long- too far injured to be able to have a quality of life and would eventually be euthanized. That's after, you know, like get seen by the vet and gets determined by the vet that that's the best solution for the animal. That's why the cat numbers are so high.
Okay, because I know like the dogs, it was behavioral issues, but you're telling me that the cats aren't behavioral issues. It's-
It's injuries, yeah. Injuries or illnesses, um you know, we we get cats in there that have um certain infections and whatnot that um aren't treatable. And um like I said, again, these are overseen by a veterinarian, a vegetarian's recommendation um for the euthanasia of those cats.
And Councilman Milton, we can certainly differentiate future statistics on that as well as for the reason why the euthanization occurred.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Ben. Um so moving on to some of the policies and procedures adopted, um every shelter has a euthanasia policy. Our shelter has recently refined theirs. Is there another question of council?
Yes.
Um yes, Councilman.
Man, I forgot. I was ready to. I was excited.
I apologize.
Um that's okay. Um give me a second.
Councilman Brown, we can, we'll we'll make sure to make an opportunity. I'll call back at the end.
Yes, we'll come back. I got excited, man.
Yeah, we'll have a uh ample opportunity um as well for question and answer.
I'll catch you on the end of this.
Um so since then, we've established a euthanasia policy for the shelter. Um aggressive dogs, aggressive animals do enter the shelter. Um sometimes they're hard to adopt and they're difficult for staff to uh provide care for. Um it's been, you know, pretty well apparent that we've had some issues uh in January of uh aggressive animals. They've uh had dog bites on staff, on veterinaries, uh veterinarians in their care. Um I think in light of that too, we were able to create a new process with nonprofits and rescue groups to ensure that aggressive animals, if they are aggressive with staff, our volunteers, our veterinarian partners. Um we do now have a program where they are um connected with a rescue group and then put to uh training where they can be trained to be uh more adoptable and friendly to the community. So we're able to to fund that through some nonprofits and rescue groups as well. So we're pretty excited about that. Um we have new partnerships with uh area shelters, but we have new partnerships with uh shelters in the Seattle area as well. Um typically in larger metropolitan areas, you'll have shelters that need animals um to adopt out. Um if we get overcrowded, we have great partners, particularly with Seattle Humane and uh the shelter in Stanwood. Um we've been working uh with them and uh they come out to Tri-Cities, they come out to Yakima as well to pick up animals to uh transfer to their shelters and adopt out on the west side. So it's great for our staff only to have to drive to Yakima to drop off a number of dogs and cats to find, help them find their forever homes. And um it's been a great system and a great partnership uh so far as well. And we're also able to establish a cat rescue partnership um to help our cats out as well. You see a lot of dogs get transferred, but it's good to find uh cat rescue relationships as well. And then, yeah, as explained before, um two million dollar budget outlay covers both enforcement and housing of animal control cases. Um we do have the focus on sheltering, long-term care, and really just the general logistics of running the animal shelter, which includes staffing, benefits, wages, um volunteer and foster coordination, and then obviously our transfers and rescue group coordination as well. So, yeah. So as part of this, we've been working with the uh City of Pasco. We have an expanded communications team and uh we're enacting a new communications plan uh for the shelter as well. Um this is commencing, I think our first meeting is tomorrow, and uh looking to establish our messaging for the shelter to the community. Um this will include community education posts, so basically, you know, what an animal control officer does in the field, um how to approach stray animals. Um we do have uh sometimes, are you able to surrender an animal to the shelter and how how that's beneficial to the animal rather than just leave an animal or abandon the animal at the shelter after hours as well? Um so really trying to establish some good, consistent community education. Um you may have seen on TV that there is a pet of the week, so we do work with uh one of the local TV stations to uh have a pet adoption of the week. And uh we'll be looking to get that on our social media as well to highlight some animals that uh would be great for some of the families in the area. Um we're looking to do some behind-the-scenes uh just to show shelter operations, what the processes are, um maybe a behind-the-scenes video of how to adopt an animal, uh what happens at intake and and uh and uh just really a day in the life of someone in the animal shelter to get more promotion out there as well. And then obviously, communication on new policies and procedures. May not necessarily be the most entertaining, but as new policies and procedures for the care of the animals get pushed, um we want to make sure that the community is well aware of those and we uh enact better transparency and accountability to those uh policies and procedures as well. So um I think what's what's happened with the previous contractor setup and and what we've had a couple of months ago too, is we had some capacity issues. Um under Ben's leadership and then just our staff, getting staff under the city uh umbrella. Uh we've been working with foster groups, rescues, and others to coordinate transfers to make sure that we have uh plenty of room in the shelter. Uh we do have to reserve some space for any emergent animal control cases. Um if there's a dog bite, um aggressive dogs, uh court holds, uh law enforcement holds, we do have to reserve some space in our shelter for that. Um but as of right now, we are not denying any requests for sheltering, dog surrenders, um anything like that, and we're able to basically establish our relationships to get animals into safe places and make sure that they're cared for in the community and eventually adopted out to their forever homes. We are also fully staffed for animal control now, so we're looking at dedicating off one officer in each community, so Pasco, Richland, Kennewick with enough um backup for uh mutual aid should there be a case coming in. Ben's gonna maintain his commission uh for animal control as well, so he can step in if needed if it's a particularly interesting day, uh which we see sometimes, but um we're basically able to help out with um animal sheltering through all the communities as well. And it's good to be fully staffed. We'll go into the commu- uh officers in a little bit. Um with previous contractors, we had some complaints from the community about the pricing of animals for adoption, um and high prices for adoption of animals. Uh we currently price our dogs and cats at a hundred dollars for adoptions typically. Um if we do have a need for space and a need to create space, we have discounted dogs for clear the shelter promotion, I think as low as fifty dollars. Currently this month, seventy-five dollars. So anyone on council or the community wants to come adopt a dog or a cat, come on out, they're seventy-five bucks. So moving on to animal control and enforcement, obviously working, um it is the, you know, intent of the public animal shelter. It's an animal control facility. Um in the field, control enforcement of all the ordinances is a prevailing need for the region. We are fully staffed, working to be more responsive. Um ACA membership communities, our 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 membership committee on the Animal Control Authority includes law enforcement leadership for both Kennewick and uh Richland. And then I myself interface with Pasco PD on uh law enforcement, animal control interface issues. So our goal is to have more mutual aid and cooperation with law enforcement. Um this includes attendance of shift briefings by the animal control um officer for each city, so they can get familiar, build relationships with the officers in the field. Um obviously, that's relationship building, but training as well. Um we're willing to offer training from an animal control perspective to our law enforcement uh uh community. So how how to approach a stray dog, what to do if you, you know, encounter certain situations relating to animals. Certainly build great relationships so we can respond to complaints and needs in the field a lot better than we have been. Also, animal control officers will be training in community education. Um we want to ensure that our methods and practices are properly uh um explained to reporting parties, um people that are found in violation, so they know what the practices are. This is what happens when um we get a call for this type of violation. This is what happens. This is your rights to appeal. This is your rights to uh uh redeem your dog um back down at the shelter. So we're looking to do a lot of infield communication and education. Um like I said before, we're gonna start patrolling in each city, um being proactive, having animal control officers in their vehicles driving around rather than waiting at the shelter for a call and having to drive to Richland to find a dog. Um they might come across where there's a loose dog in the field and they can make contact there. They're equipped with wands to see if there's a microchip and hopefully there's some infield redemptions which keeps the population low at the shelter itself. Um we'll also be working to look at a seven days a week coverage for animal control officers. Uh once we get training established and uh get our schedules in place, be looking to have more regular um on-call uh uh presence in our community and our region. So from an, I think that was me tapping the microphone, from an animal control um authority perspective, just some background on on the ACA. Um it is the group in charge of enforcement operations. Um it was determined through an inter-local agreement that this regional approach was best for all three cities. Uh the management committee is made up of Kennewick Police Commander Maynard, Richland Deputy Police Chief Nair, and myself. Um the purpose of the Animal Control Authority is to establish policies and plan for the animal control in the community. Um we assist in developing the budget for the shelter and provide reports such as this evening to the city councils at least once per year. Um we've been working on a quarterly basis and really invite, as we get invited to Richland and Kennewick as well. Um ACA typically meets on Thursday mornings throughout its tenure. Um coming soon, we'll be looking at amending that meeting frequency. Um the date and time to better be accessible to the public. So Thursday morning at ten AM may not be accessible to people that have to work, but if there's a time where we can uh have the public attend more of our meetings, um these changes will be publicly announced once we make a determination on on the new outlay of meetings um aft- and after discussion with our member communities as well. And we are currently under construction. Um many of you were at the groundbreaking for the animal shelter, so this is just a another quick shot of the rendering and the placement there. Um so we're pretty excited over the next uh ten, eleven months to see a lot of great progress on our new facility here, which has been long awaited for the community. Um and in addition to that, if you've driven down to the shelter, you've seen uh pardon our mess. Uh we are still working on public improvements, um trail relocation, installing uh upgraded eight-inch water lines, um sewer lines, the necessary utilities to convey to the animal shelter, and then patching up the road once we can uh get some warmer weather going um out here as well. So uh animal shelter's still open. We're still adopting even though there's a lot of construction going on down there. Um but yeah, that's our plan right now. So Ben and I can stand for any questions, comments from the council.
I'm back.
Okay. Councilmember Brown.
Hey, um just on, could there be more detailed slash transparency regarding the euthanizations?
Sure.
What is, break that down for us in a sense, because I'm understanding that it's a no-kill shelter. So is it or is it not?
It is not designated as a no-kill shelter. Um the American Humane Society, I believe, is uh the designated board talks about a no-kill shelter is um I guess ninety, ninety percent um I I forget how to put it, ninety percent alive animals. You know, you're, we're not euthanizing for space. Um so we meet the standard and the thresholds for a no-kill shelter, but we've never been designated a no-kill shelter.
Um a follow-up to that is when we do euthanize, um how much information do we give to the public? And the reason why I ask that, you know, we just went through. Um so how much do we share with them when we do euthanize and why? I like when he came up and explained to us why. So I think if the public knew why or what was going on, it would probably less feeling like there's no transparency. So so how can we communicate, um I'm gonna use the word better to the public to really explain. I think it was six. Our number was six. So that was hurtful to a lot of people. So if we were more transparent and clear as to why we did that to each animal, um I'm sure they would feel a little bit more better.
Sure, and I think um we certainly keep the records of each animal and uh the care, the feeding, uh euthanization and and the reasons why. So we can certainly, as uh Councilman Milton had asked previously in the presentation, we can certainly expand that data in subsequent reports as to the reason. Is it, is it an illness thing? Is it, was it an injury that was beyond repair, for lack of a better term, or was it aggression? We can certainly expand that information and provide that to the public.
Nice. I think what I was kind of looking for, no, I think I know, um looking for is more direct um infra-information. I don't know if it's via website or is there a section about euthanizations on the website, maybe, I'm not sure. But just that forward, right-out-front information, because let's say we run to another four or five and you have justifiable reason. Um you know, that hurts a lot of people. Um for whatever reason, the emotional side is is high. But if it's out there, it's already done, we're being proactive, is gonna be my word. I think the hit is a little bit less. That's just suggestions. I, because those are, that's conversation out there. So why, why didn't we know? I think when everyone showed up here, we didn't know that, but if we would have had the explanation that we received from this gentleman today, probably a little bit more ease would have, would have happened.
We can certainly work towards that.
Yeah, so that's just suggestions and my last one would be the volunteers. Um is there, I'm gonna use the word better process when vetting the volunteers, um how they go through the process of being trained and bringing back correct information. You know, things do happen. There should be some requirements or maybe a second eye when the volunteer is there instead of just one person with the animal volunteer help clean. So they could be a witness to whatever happened. I know there was some, some different conversations about injuries. So there was, you know, some dogs that, you know, or I'm just gonna say animals that was um a little more aggressive, but the volunteers were not sharing that information in hopes that, you know, just don't hurt the dog. So I'll take the bite and go to my primary doctor. And it shouldn't be that way. So, you know, maybe the buddy system when this happens, I'm not sure how that looks, but a second pair of eyes instead of one person being alone, you know, may be a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Okay, one thing I noticed when I've taken over is the city has um their administrative orders, their EOs. And in their administrative orders, I found the volunteer uh section of it. And in that, there is a uh requirement that the volunteers are supposed to be signing stating that they will report any injury or incident or anything involving why they're volunteering. And I've been starting to enforce that um with the volunteers so that they will come to me and let me know that, hey, this happened. It doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be a bad mark on a dog or a cat or anything like that, but it just, it needs to be reported, so at least we, we know that it happened. Um just for, you know, if something ever came out of it, like they ended up going to their primary doctor and get infection or something, we we just need to know. Um so instead of using, a lot of volunteers, we use the buddy system, um where they'll walk dogs together. And that's how they get to know what dogs get along with, what other dogs, or if they're reactive or or whatnot. And then they report that back to us so we can develop a good um bio for the dog to help with the adoption. You know, this dog's good with other dogs. It's not reactive, whatever, walked by a cat, no reaction. It helps us understand them better. Um so, but we do have volunteers that come down there and walk individually just because they want to get out there. They put their earbuds on, they go walk the path. Um but yeah, they've all signed now a waiver that says if something happens, they're to report it. So we're hoping that that's gonna solve some of the issues with the volunteers getting injured and not reporting it.
Sounds good. No, thank you. It sounds like your experience is gonna uncover some great changes down there. And Director Rakhai, thank you. It looks awesome to me. Looks like you guys are on the right path, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilman Brown, Councilman Milton.
Uh thank you, Mayor Proton Meloni. Um yeah, I did have a question. I'd heard like a while ago you had a ringworm incidence with the cat. Um those fifteen cats that were put down, are they in that total or did all the cats recover? I mean, how do you guys deal with situations like that? Could you expand on that, please?
I don't know what it was like before I started. I know there was a good amount of cats that we had a room set aside for ringworm. Um, they've all recovered except for three, and they're, those are still being medicated. Uh, we've talked to that, we consulted with veterinarians and um found other remedies we could, we could try. Uh, we trained a little better on cleaning, uh understanding the ratio of their cleaning supplies to know it's gonna take care of their ringworm situation. And the number has considerably dropped down to, I think, um, the last number I heard, which was about a week ago, was three ringworm cats left.
Okay, well, I just gotta go off your expertise. I look forward to coming down and meeting you more personally and get another tour. I know we've done that with Director Radkai. Uh, and it was a lot better than what it was, you know, over a year and a half ago, so I was impressed. Then again, I've gone down and when I found a dog and it was this customer service, I thought was, was pretty well. I just, you do worry and I know it's came up also where um especially like with the euthanized dogs, and they said, oh, we did reach out to the rescue, and since I'm part of that in a roundabout way, it would be good if you guys had like a log and say, hey, this is, you know, we talked to Mikey's Chance and make a list. I, I know you guys said that you're not gonna go down that road like what happened last time, but it would, for a community aspect, it would be very good if you actually had like a log and who you talk to, just so it doesn't say, oh, I talked to the shell or the rescuers, and then they all say, oh, no, and they're on these, you know, Facebook boards, they know they never contacted us. You know, there's a bunch of shenanigans going on or however you wanna word it, but uh, you know, we just want transparency and and I wanna be able to look constituents in the eyes, say, hey, we're doing everything we can uh for these animals. And then the last question, I know I've taken up a lot of time, but uh what is the, the shelters with like spayed and neutered, you know, we hear you need to spay and neuter your pets? Does the city, I mean, I, maybe I should know this, but uh, do you guys have any process for that? Or is it like if a, an animal comes in on the street, nobody picks the dog up, is it just goes out?
For your first question, since the incident in January, we do start keeping a log. It's written, every, every, every rescue group we contact gets documented and the reason why, either they declined or if they can. Um, we just kinda go down the list. It, it starts off with a printed list and then we add new rescues all the time as we develop relationships with them. So that, that is happening now. And as far as the spay and neuter, no animal will leave the shelter unless it's spayed and neutered. Uh, the city pays for it. We take it in. We have um uh points, I guess you can say, with uh certain veterinarians that we have, that we take our dogs uh to pet or population, we take them, uh we, we start with the Ben Franklin Humane Society, now that they got it been established. Uh, we take dogs over there to be um spayed and neutered, um where, whatever vet will squeeze us in. Uh, we have an agreement with it. We take them in and get them spayed and neutered. So before you take it home, um, to get spayed and neutered, if you adopt it today, deployment's not until Thursday. They'll come in Thursday and pick it up after it's been spayed and neutered.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I'll, I've heard some rumors about that, that City Pasco doesn't do that, so it's glad to hear that.
Every single one of them.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Campos.
Well, thank you, Mayor Porta Maloney. Um, I, I hope that if uh, if my dog ever gets out, that guy goes for at least five hundred dollars. You guys can hold on to it a little longer before I come get him. Um, but uh, he would go quick too, man. Loves kids, loves kids. The uh, the thing that I have on that though, it's kind of the same line is, and this is just kind of philosophical, but you know, a lot of people in the animal community have such big hearts and they take it personally when a dog gets lost or something like that happens. But realistically, if, if, you know, something were to happen to my dog, that's my burden to bear, and it's not the community's to bear. And I understand it would be sad, but, you know, we really should be looking at ownership. And in a, in a perfect world, we wouldn't need animal control because people would be able to keep their animals safe and healthy and, you know, contained. But um, there's such a thing as cats, you can't do that with those guys. They don't, they don't follow the rules. I just, you know, a big, we had a big turnout. People felt very uh much a certain way about how our animal control was going, and I just wanna say that they don't talk and celebrate the wins, the things you guys are doing right. And I appreciate you guys highlighting all the things that you are doing right, and I'm kind of peeved that the community that, that feels a certain way didn't turn out with the same level of interest to hear about the things you're doing to be proactive about their concerns. We were lambasted about not doing our job, and our job is to give the city manager direction to provide to his staff about our concerns, which are the community's concerns, and I think that they've been met and are continually being met. And I hope that the animal lovers community can, you know, see that and recognize that. And hopefully, um, you know, when they, they start paying attention to some of these wins. I'd like to see them show up with the same amount of attention as uh they do for the things that aren't going right. That's all.
And Councilmember Campos, uh, any more before I, I just briefly wrap it up? Um, I just wanna say that um I did have an opportunity to go and um and walk with a volunteer um this weekend. Um, and the facility um is loud, it smells bad, and it still continues to be awful. I'm really glad that we're, we're building that new facility right next door. Um, that's nothing to say about staff, that's just simply the fact that the building's old and, and the use is um, is, is intense. So um, things are looking, I do see things looking better. There were a lot of volunteers out walking dogs, so there were, there was a lot of attention for the dogs. I left before the, the cat portion, whether they're gonna play with cats. I am not a cat person, so I was happy to hang out with the dogs, did not wanna play with the cats, so. So, um, anyway, so it sounds like we're, we're, we are, we have turned the corner to some extent in terms of where we're going with this and how things are going. Um, and that really was, you know, my, my understanding, it was just gonna take time moving on from a, a, you know, contractor that wasn't doing their job and, and you know, was um, was doing some pretty shady stuff to moving on to a, the city owning this, it's gonna take some time. We're gonna need that runtime to be able to, 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 to really take it over and do it right. So I'm hoping that we're, we're, we've turned that corner. Um, appreciate uh opportunity to, to meet you, uh, Ben, uh, for, for the first time for uh, and I hope we all see you uh the next time, next quarterly update. I assume you'll be giving it instead of uh Director Radkai. Great.
Thank you.
And then, so the only, I did have two quick questions. One, uh, Director Radkai, I'm gonna address this to you, is um the ordinances, as I understand it, between, for the different cities are different. Kennewick's um animal control ordinances are different than Pasco's, are different than Richland's, and yet we have the same group of people trying to enforce them. Is there going to be an effort to unify those?
Um, really, it comes up to each municipality, city council, and their general desires of what they wanna do for impound fees, redemption fees, that sort of thing. Um, we can certainly raise that issue with the Animal Control Authority. Um, I know when uh, uh, we've had, you know, some, some previous iterations of just looking at that. I know our staff's well-trained and our finance staff is well-trained to make sure that we're assessing the proper fines, redemption fees. Um, but we can certainly run that up with the other cities and see what they'd like to do to bring some conformance and commonality to it.
Appreciate that. I was worried less about the fees and more about, there look like there's potentially different old times and other administrative actions between them. At least, um, so I'd be interested in understanding what other spots there we could look at, making sure that they were uniform. And I'd be certainly happy to go talk to any of my counterparts and say, hey, look, it'd be best if we have one agency running it for us to all have one, one set of, one set of codes. Um, otherwise, we could end up in a non-compliant state um completely by accident. Um, and I would hate, hate to see something like that happen. And the other thing, if I understood correctly, um, Director Radkai, when you're talking about the um, the, the board, the Oversight Board, back to the comment of community, of concerned community members, uh, um, obviously, we've heard a lot. Um, it always feels a little bit unfair, because while we're the administrative agencies, we're, we're one of three partners. Um, and I believe we even have a contract with West uh Richland, so there's additional animals outside of just that that we, that, that we're, we're responsible for. And it's important because, of course, we are, we are, we are the administrative agency, um, but it is always a little bit unfair for us to be the ones getting beaten up. Um, and some of these concerns and questions can be uh best addressed at a staff sort of level. Um, is the Oversight Board an area where that would be the right board into the future, potentially for concerned community members to go first and, and be able to, to address very directly the city representatives?
Yeah, I'll just make a, make it clear that the Animal Control Authority is a management committee, so it's not a bona fide board or commission. And, and it's not entitled as an Oversight Board. Um, but I think revising the meetings to allow for greater public attendance, greater public input um would certainly uh be an initial first stop for the public if they have any concerns and any suggestions.
Yeah, I look forward to what that looks like retooled um a little bit as you're able to work through it. And again, please, I think that any of us up here on the, uh, up here on the dais would be more than happy to go talk to our counterparts in Kennewick and Richland and make sure that they're, they're on board with this as well as best we can.
Certainly.
If there's a, a need for that, um, I know I'd be eager to have that conversation instead of spending two hours getting yelled at sitting up here.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any last thoughts on that? If not, let's go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, item eight, miscellaneous council discussion. Start with um, um interim city manager Lincoln, and then we will circle on.
I'll be really brief. Uh, first of all, we've got a picture from the groundbreaking that we wanted to share, that proof, proof that it happened and that you were all there. Uh, and then, uh, just really quickly, wanted to let you know that you received uh an email today about some uh scheduling some issues. So I just wanted to make sure that you uh check your email and, and please see that, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Campos.
Uh, thank you. Um, interim city manager Lincoln, just wanted to see if you could provide any more insight on uh the comments we got last week about living wages and work going on at the Dairy Gold Facility.
I, I can try and uh provide a little bit of light on that. Um, that has to do with a, a private development and it has nothing to do with um any, any of the contracts, as I understand it, from the port and, and certainly it's not a city project. Uh, if it were a city project or a port project, there'd be requirements for um higher level of wages than, than what I understand the, the private development is, is providing.
Thank you.
Any other council members have something to raise up for miscellaneous discussion? Seeing no lights on, um, I will move on to item nine adjournment. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for, for hanging out with us the whole time, and thank you for the viewing, viewing audience. Thank you all. We're, uh, this meeting is now adjourned.